All right. Good evening, everybody, and we're going to be calling to order the Malibu Planning Commission meeting of November 6, 2023. This meeting is being held in a Zoom format that allows members of the public to participate in person and remotely via Zoom. And in addition, we have one of our commissioners that is going to be calling in or that is on this meeting via Zoom this evening. In-person participants, if you would like to speak, please submit your request to speak to the clerk before your item is called, and only in-person participants may donate or accept donations of time. Remote participants, if you would like to speak, please join the Zoom meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to comment on is called. May I please have a roll call?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Leonard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yeah, here.
Thank you. Chair Peake?
I am here in the living flesh.
You have the quorum.
Thank you. I would like to have an approval of the agenda, but we should note that the item for A, the applicant has requested to continue it to a date uncertain or certain.
Thank you very much, Chair. It's my understanding that the applicant had requested to a date certain for your next meeting. However, we're already getting ready to publish those packets, and we have a large agenda at the next meeting. If the commission wishes, we could attempt for a date certain at your first meeting in December, which the date is the fourth.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the agenda with that.
I would like to not second the motion. I would like to make a first motion to continue the RioCon item. What is it? Five? What's the number on it?
5A.
5A. Because we got several different packets over 300 pages. It's a matter of public concern. We got those late Wednesday. It's a very detailed nuanced item, and I feel like, you know, if it was somebody's house with two or three neighbors, that would be one thing, but this is all very quick, and there's a lot of history in this that has yet to be revealed. Now, maybe if you guys don't feel similarly now, when we get to the item, we can talk about what might be missing.
Okay. Commissioner Hill, you can correct me where I'm wrong. You are, the motion is a continuance of item 4A to, and Rebecca, I believe it was December 4th, 2023, as well as a continuation of item 5A to a date uncertain.
Yeah, to whenever is appropriate. It's very quick, and I feel like there's a lot to digest, and if somebody like, you know, at least for myself, you know, I can barely get my head around it, and if the public, you know, we're talking about right in the middle of town.
There's, you don't need to convince me on the merits. I just want to make sure I get your motion appropriately, so date uncertain.
I have a question. I have not been sworn in yet. Is that a technicality that needs to be resolved first?
That would be correct. So, how do you want me to deal with that?
That would require a change in the agenda.
You might also want to take a pledge of allegiance and then possibly reorder in here 1A prior to the rest of...
That sounds like a great idea. All right, Jacob, you good at the pledge of allegiance? Awesome. Stand up and lead us.
Just say, "I pledge."
Do we have to go over here?
No, you say it right there.
We'll come back to you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Sorry for putting you on the spot. Thank you very much. And, you know, as you can see, I'm wearing a Dodgers hat because I still have hope for next year. All right, so I'm going to reorder, let's reorder the agenda. We're going to go ahead and start with the oath of office, and then we will go for an approval of the agenda. At this point, we're going to do the oath of office of our new Planning Commissioner, Drew Leonard, and if Janice and Jacob would like to come up here to the podium to administer the oath of office.
We're doing this one. Hello, may I begin? I, Drew Leonard...
I, Drew Leonard...
...do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
...that I will diligently serve as a planning commissioner of the city of Malibu...
That I will diligently serve as a planning commissioner of the city of Malibu...
...that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the state of California...
And the Constitution of the state of California...
...against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic...
...that I will bear true faith and allegiance...
That I will bear true faith and allegiance...
...to the Constitution of the state of California...
To the Constitution of the state of California...
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely...
...without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion...
...and that I will well and faithfully...
And I will well and faithfully...
...discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter...
Discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janice and Jacob. Andrew, thank you for serving. All right. Back to an approval of the agenda. So, again...
We have a motion in a second?
Correct. So, we're going to hear Craig's motion, and we will go with a roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner or Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
No.
Commissioner Smith?
No.
Chair Peake?
Negative.
Motion fails.
Okay, so again, I'm going to make a motion to continue item 4A to the date certain, which is December 4th, and we will hear the rest of the meeting as it is scheduled. May I have a second? I second that. All right. Let's go for a roll call. You can.
Okay, I just don't know how many of you people, I mean, you commissioners, were around when the Typle Gallery lot was approved in the pool, but it involved City Council and involved a rehearing by the Planning Commission and involved an appeal to the Coastal Commission. It was a very, very detailed thing, and I hope you consider the fact that when we get projects at our level that are this detailed, and we don't do them absolutely correctly, they cost the city many, many hours of staff time and a lot of Coastal Commission hearings and then rehearings in the city. So, I wish you'd consider that when you make the vote.
Thank you, John. Rebecca?
Chair Peake?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. We're now at public comment on things that are not on the agenda, following our report on the posting of the agenda. Rebecca?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on October 27th, 2023. The amended agenda was properly posted on November 1st, 2023.
Thank you. All right. Norm Haney, followed by Drew Drummond. Joe Drummond, and Joe, you have two extra speakers that I can see, so you'll have extra time.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chair Peake. Tonight's a disappointing night for me, and the reason is because my client filed an application to build a house, a fire rebuild, on a property at the end of Greenwater, a project that was on the agenda for tonight. It was on the agenda two weeks ago, but it was continued. I'm not exactly sure why it was continued then, but, and tonight, apparently it's been continued for another four weeks. When my client made the application two and a half years ago, there was no primary view determination, and I was advised that there wouldn't be a primary view determination that would prevent him from moving forward with his project. So, he went ahead and spent $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 in addition to the cost of the property and moved forward and was prepared to have a project approved two weeks ago by, with a recommendation for approval. Clean sheet project, no variances, no minor modifications, one issue resolving an issue that occurred in 1972, giving Bob Dylan a small piece of property. We were not heard tonight because somebody claimed that they did have a primary view determination. I'm a little confused because I thought that the right for a person having a lot and building a house on it, a fire rebuild, was continued, extended for a couple of years. Maybe I'm wrong, but I'd like to get that cleared up, and if that's the case, then the primary view ordinance probably should not have been applied to this particular project. Second, you have a right to allow your vegetation to grow up for 10 years. That's how long it can grow up and block a person's view. So, how do you determine, how do you have a primary view ordinance when you haven't given the person the chance to allow his vegetation to grow up and block the view? Those are my comments, gentlemen. Thank you for your time, and I respect you all.
Thank you, Norm.
Members of the Planning Commission, by appointing local contractor Drew Leonard to the Malibu Planning Commission, Councilmember Doug Stewart has made an unfortunate mistake. If it is not reversed, it will end up costing the city tons of money. I urge Councilmember Stewart to reconsider. It is not too late. This is important. People have tried to tell you. They have gone on record by sending in complaints to the city, but you members of the tight-knit old guard are so eager to retain a grip on the city's power, so eager to keep raking in money for contractors and developers, that you turn a deaf ear to the public. Consequently, your big buck bulldoze-at-all-costs mentality is making people angry, and so this issue will backfire, and it will not be good for our city. The things I'm going to tell you right now might sound alarming, but they're true, and there is proof that they are true. So, therefore, it's my duty to tell the public some of the things this guy Drew Leonard has done, and if he didn't expect this kind of outrage at his appointment, then he is truly out of touch with reality, and I will send this proof, if they don't already have it, to City Council. Mr. Leonard has shown he will not listen to others and that he will try to destroy those who publicly disagree with him. Before I get into details, you should know that there were four people who were willing to apply to be the new planning commissioner, but Councilmember Stewart, I don't think, took some of the recommendations. Drew Leonard, really? You know, people know, everyone should know that he is a bully, especially against the elderly and women, and conducts himself like a mobster. That is, it is second nature for him to smear people with harmful self-serving lies, that he will stop at nothing when money is involved, and that he is so vindictive that he violated private company files, files normally reserved to validate assets of loan seekers, and blatantly pulled out confidential financial information, then posted it online, but in an altered form, surrounded by his own lies. Would this intimidate anyone with the courage to disagree or call him out for his immoral and boorish behavior? Of course it would. His office would not even discipline him, as his wife is their top producer. That shows the power and greed of his associates. I'm sure he'll continue to slander me in retaliation. At least Malibu's Next Door social media site banned him and removed some of his comments. Councilmembers already have some of this on file, including a state complaint, and there's no time to mention them all. They are not all illegal, but they are all reprehensible and immoral. Here are a couple of examples. One, while many actual fire victims like the Zalinski family have had to wait five years for a permit, Leonard has been going around calling himself a rebuild expert and bragging that he had an in with the city, allowing him to fast-track his projects. He has gained several clients this way. His first project received the very first rebuild permit in the city. Just as soon as Leonard completed it, after causing a nightmare for his neighborhood architectural committee, he quickly sold it with his wife as the buyer's and seller's agent and pocketed over $1.1 million. He immediately repeated the process, buying a burnt-out lot a few weeks later and completing a rebuild now worth three and a half times as much as he bought it for. He continued his fire sale rebuild projects while raking in enormous profits while never actually being a fire victim. But why are Malibu planners prioritizing the profit takers rather than the homeowners who were burned out with just the clothes on their backs? Two, City Councilmember... Two, city council member Karen Farer also purchased a burnout property, but in an environmentally sensitive habitat area. Under city law, she was entitled to a rebuild permit, allowing a new structure to be 10% larger than the original. Instead, she increased the home size by 40%, adding an unpermitted second story. Leonard publicly attacked and intimidated those who called for the city to enforce the normal coastal development permit requirements and code violations. He believes cutting corners and the codes are perfectly fine for developers who have friends in high places. Three, members in Leonard's own neighborhood board never allowed him to be on their board as he would have attempted to change the neighborhood's rural character. Yet he somehow was asked to apply to be a planning commissioner and got it. Last month, the former chair of the California Fair Political Practices Commission, Anne Revel, wrote a letter to the city planning, city pointing out flagrantly unfair potential conflicts of interest on the Malibu Planning Commission. She noted that two of the five members were local contractors who could approve projects on what they could potentially bid on later. And now guess what? Drew Leonard's appointment to the commission makes him the third commissioner who is also a local contractor. To appoint him is to slap our FPPC members right across the face. Is this what we want from Malibu? To jeopardize every project that they vote on to become nullified and reversed? Shame on our city attorneys and shame on you commissioners, Peake, Smith, and now Leonard. This is wrong, and I do hope you do not enjoy your last few weeks on the planning commission once a ruling in favor of Anne Revel in residence comes from the FPPC. Every appeal will go right back to the planning commission and cost the city possibly millions of dollars in time and money lost. Thank you, and I do hope you do consider resigning and stop being so selfish. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe. All right, no further comments. We are going to go to planning commission comments.
There are two raised hands on Zoom, too.
Oh. Oh, so do you want to speak on 2A?
Oh, 4A.
Well, 4A is, 4A is not on the agenda anymore. So if you'd like to speak under public comment, why don't you come up right now and we'll correct his slip to have it say 2A.
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Oh, sure. Hi, thanks for, thanks for that. Hi, commissioners, Chair Peake, thanks for hearing me out. Edward Coomer, my family and I own the property on Greenwater that got continued. I think Norm did a good job of communicating the situation, but I just want to say it's been two and a half years. Great collaboration with the city. We do look forward to living there, so the sooner we can get this resolved, the better. The only I'll add to what Norm said is our story polls have been up for 53 days. So we more than had them up for the neighbors to look at. And so it's a real shame at the very, very last minute. I mean, we worked through everything and there was a lot that we worked through, as you can see in the notes. So anyway, obviously we're disappointed about the extension. Thanks for making sure we get on the fourth and hopefully we can get this resolved. So thanks.
Thank you. Was David Cooper here? Did you want to speak, David? I just, because I know that you spoke on an item that we continued, so I was going to give you the opportunity to speak if you'd like.
Regarding the same. Hello. Regarding the same item, we are the neighbors across the street from proposed development. I actually had prepared some slides, but I didn't know if we're continuing. So we'll do it next time. But just real briefly, the, we only found out about this development when we happened to go to the property and saw the story polls across the street. Same goes for the neighbors behind us on Blue Water that do have the primary view determination. They didn't know about this project until the story polls were already up. And we are concerned about the, the mass of this project, which was not only coming up much taller than the, the original house, but also much closer to the street and on a much higher grade. So if you compare the outline to the previous house, it's, it's blocking not only on a height level, but width, it's about 100 feet wide. And so we're concerned about the impact to our property. Thank you.
Thank you. And you obviously heard that we're going to be hearing that on the fourth, so hopefully you're available to come then. Okay, now we have two people for public comment on Zoom.
Yeah, Ryan? Ryan, you're unmuted. All right, we'll try Ryan again. Georgia Goldfarb?
Hello, can you hear me speak? Can you hear me speak? Oh, great, thank you. I'd just like to say that I, this is the same matter about Mr. Leonard. I'm concerned about the appointment of Drew Leonard to the planning commission by Doug Stewart. Given his profession and apparent favoritism in receiving permits and the interest of the FPPC in this appointment, it is unwise for the city to permit him to serve. If you have a question regarding the appropriateness of this and don't have legal counsel who can really clarify it, I would suggest that you engage Mr. Fred Wucher, who is a longtime expert on these matters. And to remedy this without having to involve the city in some potential legal action, I suggest that Mr. Stewart find another candidate to serve on the planning commission, one without the encumbrance of conflict of interest. There is certainly at least one highly qualified and fair candidate, and that is Joe Drummond. And I think we should just proceed forward with city business without the appearance of a conflict of interest. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Georgia.
We'll try Ryan again.
I've clicked on mute, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Okay, I wanted to request that the commission consider as a future agenda item, a general traffic mitigation requirement for development in the highly congested eastern Malibu corridor between the Adamson House and the eastern city limits, because that's been the recurring area of importance, as mentioned in the PCH traffic safety studies. It's the recurrence of tragic accidents, crashes, street racing, and that the project that you did not continue tonight is the product of a joint parking agreement that is a total failure. And so by continuing to try and study additional parking requirements for just a portion of that agreement, doesn't make sense. The whole agreement needs to be revisited just because it's not working. So I wanted to say that. And as to the matter of appointment of commissioners and so forth, I would hope that this commission can be civil and not berate members of the public and attack them for speaking to your group. I saw it at the last meeting and I thought it was atrocious. So if you really think you can do a good job, I'd like to see it tonight in, in that respect for all the people who are tuning in to these important meetings. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Ryan. Parker, anybody else online?
No, those are all the raised hands.
Nobody else wanted to speak that's in the public? That didn't put a slip in? Okay. All right. Commission comments. John, we're going to go ahead and start with you for commissioner comments.
Okay. My first comment is regarding the minutes of June 6th, 2002, too. And I'm not coming on, commenting on the accuracy of those minutes, just that in those minutes on page four of 12, Richard reported that.
John? John?
Yes.
We're not talking about consent yet, we're just talking about our comments.
I know, and I'm commenting about something in a set of minutes that wasn't completed, not that they aren't accurate.
All right, sorry.
On page 412, Richard Malika reported that the June Hotel was in violation of certain conditions under the Coastal Act and that they would have to come to the planning commission and have them correct it. While it's been well over a year and there's been no sign of anything coming back, in the meantime, the June Hotel continues to violate those conditions. So my question is, how do, why do we have to read minutes a year and a, year and a quarter late and figure out that something's missing? Shouldn't it, when we report it in our minutes, shouldn't it be followed up? That's my comment.
All right, nothing else?
Nope.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Richard to come back to that after we finish the other commissioner comments, okay?
Okay.
All righty. Dennis?
Thank you. Well, to start it off, I want to say happy birthday to my daughter Kelly, who turned a big 4O about a week or so ago, and to Stephanie, whose birthday is tomorrow, and I wish them both all the best for the next year, until we get to talk about it next year. Moving forward, you know, there was a meeting, special meeting here on the 27th, I think it was, of September or 21st or something like that. And it was supposed to be part of a morale boosting for the staff. And ever since that point, I have seen nothing but our two council members that, one of them who said didn't grow up a snowflake, just bash staff. Can't have that. I, I've, I've sat and watched this happen. I've watched, I've watched them just take them apart. These are the, this is, this is who we have. This is our people that have come here every day to work. They don't come here to be beat to hell because you think you're right about something. And if you feel like you're that right about it, make an appointment with these people. I have. I've made an appointment when I thought I had a, a reason to have an appointment with, with Mr. Malika. And we talked. But to bring it out here and think that you're the tough guy and just tear everyone up, that's not how you do business. And we are a business. We're open every day. So this, this doesn't fly. This doesn't, this doesn't do anybody any good. Any of these people over to my right, to everybody over there to their left, this isn't how you do business in a, in a good city. Okay, PCH. This is tough because we my thought is the cameras are going to be a good thing. I'm really happy about that. I have gotten a couple of tickets for run, both times, running 62 miles an hour and down at the east end by my whole project at Tuna Canyon, no less. And I think the cameras for us that live here are going to be great. It'll help, we're going to follow the rules anyway. And but as I was driving today, I was headed towards Topanga to look at something. And I'm going 45 through most of the area that we all supposed to go 45, and there's people just going by you. So if, if, if everybody thinks that you're just going to slap on speed limit signs with your cardboard little deals on this, on the sign to make that work, it's not going to work. The state goes through a lot of trouble to figure out how traffic moves. I've been lucky enough in my career to, with the county of Riverside and the three other jurisdictions I worked in and in Empire, to go with traffic engineers, which we don't have one, traffic engineers to their meetings or their get togethers, and you see what these people do and how they work on this stuff. I understand that everybody wants to probably slow it to 35. I don't know that that's going to happen. As, as we always say here, it's not our road, it's their call. Yes, we can do some certain things. I guess if you call an emergency and you start blocking lanes and that's not going to happen, they're not going to let you do that. And you can't just put in a red light where you want. You have to understand how traffic works and you have to have been in the business. I was lucky enough to do all this. You can't just do these things. And yes, it's tough. I got that. It's, it's just awful what's happened. We had another wreck last week in the same spot. Yep, that's a bad spot. But you can make that area 35 miles an hour and people are still going to go 100 and they're still going to go 65. And because if there's nobody in front of them, they can see forever, they're going to go. So I, I just, I hope we come up with something. I think the cameras have got to help us. I, I, I'm all for that. City Councilman Stewart was big on, you know, the radar guns for, for the sheriff and, and, you know, getting these cameras so we can pull that off and think it'll help. But just to willy nilly start doing things on Pacific Coast Highway, it's not going to happen. State of California is not going to let you. You know, Director DeBeau is, you know, talking with these people every day. If you want a great example of what Caltrans thinks, just look at the chicane that we have out there at Trancas by me. You know, you go like this now, right? Is that supposed to be a calming effect? They didn't say it was a calming effect. They don't have any arrows or anything that tells you when you're going west that you're gonna, that you're gonna turn. Usually you have those yellow arrows with the black on them to let you know you're gonna turn. There's nothing out there, they don't give a damn one way or another. The other thing is, there's so much oil on the road out there when this, early in the morning, when you take off to head east, you can't see the striping. You don't know what lane you're in and, and you're boxed in anyway. So people are, you know, you're kind of like this through the chicane through La Ma as you're trying to head to work. So it'd be nice if, if they, you know, either re-stripped on the edges with black or orange so you can see when you're driving with the oil. Cause it's just glaring off from the sun and that's, we all know it's right there when you're driving at seven in the morning. So I, I wish us all the best. You know, we've got good people in front, we've got Chris Frost and we've got Keegan, we've got good people on the task force and they're working with the captain. So I'm, I'm sure that they're going to do everything they can to make it safer for us. But this is not, just not a given. It's, it's not our road, but I hope it's all the best. Okay, ADUs. As some know, I do own half a house in Coronado and the state just came down on them. Those, that one place, well, I was always amazed because of being here as long as I had. I could, I could leave work on a Monday and see a house torn down and on Friday, when I would get back down there when I used to go. And the next week, they got a concrete truck and they're pouring a slab. We don't have that because we have crappy dirt here and we, we have bad geology, so we don't get to work that quick. But the point being is, the state just nailed them. And the state wants 771 affordable units on that island. I don't know where they're going to put them, I don't know how they're going to do it, but my point to all, everybody in this room is the state is watching. And when they decide to come after us and they tell us that, that Heather Cliff is a good place for a 51 unit building, and we go, oh, well, you can't do that. And they go, well, you know, you still need 72 units. Yeah, maybe, maybe you can do that. Maybe you should put that on that corner because you're still low on your numbers. So if we get the ADUs done and we can work through that and we don't need a bunch of traffic studies for ADUs, we're not going to build 5,000 of them in a year. We'll probably barely build 500 in five years. But we need to think about that because Coronado is almost untouchable and they just got nailed. So, and they've never had any problems down there. So just, just food for thought. That's it.
Thank you, Dennis. Craig?
Want to thank everyone in the commission. I also want to sincerely thank Jeff Jennings for all his dedicated service as a city council member and planning commissioner. He has set a he has set an incredibly high standard and it's an honor to follow in his footsteps. I'm committed to cert, uh, concern, uh, committed to preserving the character of Malibu and promoting responsible development. And lastly, I'd also like to thank Doug Stewart for appointing me. I'll do my best for you, Doug. Thank you. That's it.
All right, thank you, Drew. Craig?
Okay. First, Ryan said something about doing something about traffic in the east end of town. I don't know if he asked for a study or, no, Richard, this is a question for you. If it was a study or what exactly he asked for. You know, I guess my first thought is, is that something that we even can put on our agenda? That sounds like something maybe council needs to hear and is probably well aware of that. And so turning to Commissioner Smith's comments, I feel your pain. I'm with you on all the tra, on the traffic stuff. You know, the chicanery, as it were. And I was able to have a really nice productive chat with Captain C2. I've shared some ideas I had about anti-speeding technology, got a very positive response from her, enough to get me invited onto the task force, so, or at least to sit in. And I don't want to talk about it too publicly because, you know, these are just ideas and I don't want to get out in front of whatever they can or can't do. But if anybody wants to talk to me about what we talked about. or can't do. But if anybody wants to talk to me about what we talked about individually, I'd be happy to do that. I think, let's keep the conversation moving forward on that. Anyway, some new ideas on that. And meanwhile, it's hard to tell from today's weather, but we have a red flag coming on Wednesday and Thursday. Another little Santa Ana, maybe not a huge one, but we got a PSPS notice. And in that context, this weekend, I got to tour Camp 69 Bravo up to the top of Saddle Peak with our representative Jackie Irwin, and Captain Drew Smith gave a little tour of it. And I have to say, you know, I, I feel like I'm pretty good at sussing out where systems aren't quite working and where there's an issue or problem. They've got it nailed up there. It's really tight. I don't mention, Drew was, Doug was there, and Mary Ann was there, and I, I was really impressed. They, they really have it covered well. And it, I think it, it gave me personally a little measure of ease, living on the east end of town, that, you know, that's, that's one more thing that, that might save us when, when things really get tough. So kudos to them. And again, if anybody wants to talk about the details of that place and what's going on there, I'd be happy to chat. And I took some photographs, too, for any journalists who might be doing a story on that in the near future. I probably got some pretty good photos, too. So those are my comments. Thanks.
Skylar?
Yes, John?
Mr. John, I don't know how to raise my hand. I'd just like to make a super brief comment on the housing element.
Go for it.
And that is, that is, the housing element does not require the building of any residences or units. It requires the ability to zone for them. And about 10 years ago, we forgot to file our housing element, and so they got back at us by saying you gotta do 502 houses. Okay? To my knowledge, there are no low-income houses built in Malibu, ever have been. But we followed the housing element, even the year we had 502. So getting a housing element requirement does not mean that there are any houses ever to be built, just that they're zoned so they can be built if it's economically possible. I don't know a single developer in Malibu can figure out how to do a low-income housing for a person that makes under $22,000 a year in Malibu. That's it.
Thank you for that comment. Well, I'm going to start off my comments by wishing my niece Grayson a happy ninth birthday. Not that you're listening to the planning commission meeting, but.
Sure.
And I would like to start by saying that what happened on PCH with the death of the college students is an awful thing. I don't think that everybody in this room is driving 100 miles an hour on PCH, but I think that any of us could unwittingly get into an accident at any time, and that's a horrible situation. And I feel very sad for the families and the young gentlemen that grew up in this community to cause such tragedy. I hope that our sheriff's department, along with our city and the state, can work to make this highway safer. And if it warrants us getting some traffic speed cameras, I think that would probably be a step in the right direction. So hopefully, the powers that be can get active on that, and our governor can figure out a way to add Malibu being another part of Los Angeles County to that program, to that pilot program. Drew, you do definitely have some big shoes to fill. But I think that Doug made a very solid appointment in you. I think that it's very important for people that sit on this commission to understand how to read plans, to know what they're looking at, and be able to ask questions and take the time to look at and visit the different projects that come before. So I look forward to having you on here, look forward to working with you, and want you to be welcome. I don't think that some of the things that were said weren't any merit, in my opinion, having known you from a while, really just from surfing in the water. But I think that you're a solid dude, and I think you're gonna do a solid job. So I just wanted to, to start with that. And Doug, thank you for, for appointing him. I think he'll do a very good job. And now I'm gonna turn it over to Richard, or Patrick, then Richard.
Sure. So I'm gonna be a bit redundant, but for the sake of Commissioner Leonard, I will briefly address some of the allegations pertaining, pertaining to the conflict of interest that we heard tonight, based purely on your profession in the development industry. Like all things the planning commission, your appointment was vetted on numerous levels. Our office is confident that there is no authority to date out there that disqualifies entire professions from being on the planning commission. That conflict of interest analysis is based on a case-by-case basis pertaining to where the, where the project is in the city or who the applicant is. And the Political Reform Act and its related regulations outline all of that. Our office is, is an asset. Reach out to us at any time. But as of right now, you should proceed in confidence. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Richard. And Richard, if you could shed a little light on the question that John had about the minutes from a while ago.
Yes, Chair. So Commissioner Mazza brought up the June Hotel along Pacific Coast Highway at Kenan. And as we mentioned at that meeting, they were, they, not they were, they are the subject of code enforcement, and also they have a pending conditional use permit application for the landscaping that was the source of the code enforcement case, and then also for the expansion in the operations that they would like to, to have at that site. At this time, the application remains incomplete, and that is why we have not brought it to the planning commission. We have requested that additional materials be submitted to the city, and once it is deemed complete, then it will be brought before this commission. But it is not done. As mentioned, it requires a public hearing. And then also, in response to Commissioner Hill's questions about a traffic study, that would be something for the city council, and because, because typically, traffic-related issues like that are handled by the city's Public Works Department. And with that, I don't have any comments for the group, but glad if there are other questions that come up tonight to look into those.
Thanks, Richard.
All right. John, are you good?
I'm good.
All right, cool. Did you want to make a motion for consent?
I move the consent items as presented by staff, and, and remind you that we have to take a vote on the minutes.
Thank you. I will second that, and let's take a vote on the minutes.
Well, we have to also have to consent.
Okay, so we're gonna have a roll call first on the consent calendar, and then we'll go to the minutes. And because our new commissioner was not present at those meetings, he's gonna recuse himself in the minutes portion of that. No, no, no.
And, and so Chair, I do believe the, the three actions are all receive and file. So there is no need for a vote on those unless you guys want to vote to bring it back as a full, therefore the single.
Even though he's on Zoom?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, correct.
All right, so we're all good on consent?
Sands the, sands the minutes.
Great. Okay, so now we're gonna go for 3B4, which is the approval of the minutes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Peet?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard is recused. Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so we got 4A continued, and now we're gonna start with 5A. All right, so the Nobu Riocon Motel and Malibu Tide Pool Health Club Project, CDP number 23-046, LCP A number 16-001, General Plan Map Amendment 16-001, Zoning Map Amendment 15-001, Conditional Use Permit number 16-007, Lot Tie number 21-001, Initial Study number 17-002, and Negative Declaration number 19-002. An application to rezone and change the land use designation of the properties from Community Commercial to Community Visitor Serving 2 for the existing Nobu Riocon Motel and Malibu Tide Pool Health Club lots, and conversion of the existing non-conforming use motel and adjacent private gym and pool to a bed and breakfast inn, and the sale of alcohol for onsite consumption, a lot tie of the two lots to operate conjunctively, and conversion of office space in the Tide Pool Building into a new guest suite at 22752 and 22762 Pacific Coast Highway. Staff report.
Oh, we need disclosures, I believe.
Yeah, we do need those. And John, why don't we start with you on those?
Okay, I, I was at the first hearing, and, and I, I'm sorry, I'm out of town and I forgot some of my notes. Around 2015, when the swimming pool was approved, and I appealed it to the Coastal Commission, which they accepted, and reached an agreement with the representative of Mr. Ellison. And her name was a French name like Savany or something, Tangilo. And that agreement, I withdrew my appeal with the, with the agreement that they would approve, apply for the proper zoning, which I guess, well, about 10 years, it took about 10 years to do it, and it's here tonight.
All right, is that it?
That's it.
Did you visit the site recently?
I visited the site on Saturday, Sunday. And the only thing I noted was, that it's not in the staff report, it's a commercial kitchen, and the fact that there was a police car in the middle of the highway with its lights flashing, just to calm down what's going on around there. Apparently, he's there every four, four hours every weekend, every two days a week. That's it.
Okay. Dennis?
Nothing.
Drew?
I did not get the chance to visit the site. Kind of aware of the hotel, and I have read the staff report.
Okay. Craig?
I visited the site yesterday with, John Mazza was there, too, and we met with the applicant's attorneys. Took away a general impression that there's a lot in the past decisions that hasn't necessarily been documented well, and a lot of the players involved in these details are no longer here on both sides, on the applicant's side and on the city's side. So there's, there's a little bit of archaeology involved here that makes some of the distinctions here subtle and complex, and even more so. I learned from a nearby resident that that kitchen that John mentioned is used for catering private parties elsewhere in Malibu. I asked for the applicant's representative, but didn't receive and hope to receive tonight, an FAR number, and in fact, actually, it should be two FARs, cause we have two properties, two parcels. So that would be helpful context to know what the existing FAR number is. And as far as disclosures go, that's it. Thank you.
And you didn't learn anything there that wasn't in the staff report? Cause you said you learned a bunch of stuff that you weren't aware of.
Well, we talked about how deals were made about the pool, and a lot of it is difficult to understand because it isn't on paper, and it isn't something that I can just read and understand who, you know, who, who said what, when, about why you can't use that pool, and what the, you know, it's, it's complicated, and we don't have the documentation.
Okay.
Skylar, I'd like to correct mine. We did learn that the supposed Health Swim Club has only one member, and that is the motel itself, who formed the club, but they have no other members.
I, I could add, too, that we asked if, if we could join the club, or if a member of the public could join at some price, and we, we didn't get a yes.
Well, I, I guess I would imagine that you could join to be a member of the club by paying to rent a room, and then you would have the privilege of using the club.
Yeah, and I should also.
I think that any member of the public can rent a room.
I don't know.
That's not exactly a club.
Yeah, I, I don't know if it was something that was, somebody sent to me, or it was sent to all of us. So I'll just mention it. Maybe we all got it, but the New York Times article that basically said you could come to this place, and good place to race your Lamborghini, Lamborghini to, and then you could use the private facilities, the club of this hotel, which they referred to it as a hotel in the New York Times article.
Okay.
Chair, if I may, Vice Chair Mazza, I just wanted to, to clarify one thing in your, in your disclosures, that you did say that the previous project at this address, that you, you were the one to appeal it to the Coastal Commission?
That is correct.
Perfect. And then just irrespective of that previous appeal, tonight, you're, you're gonna keep an open mind and give the current applicant a fair and unbiased decision, correct?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, and I would just want to disclose that I visited the property earlier this evening and met with the attorneys for the property owner there. I did walk around the property, looked at one of the rooms, looked at the pool and the adjacent parcel, and walked into the kitchen, and what would be the new room that hasn't been rented, that's been currently used, essentially is an, I don't know if it's an office or just a place for the employees to be. And it was being used as such when I was there. So that seemed to be in complete compliance with what they had agreed to in not having people use the pool, according to what I witnessed.
Sounds like John and I took the same walk.
All right. Adrian?
Hi. Good evening, Chair Peet, and members of the planning commission. The subject application is to change the zoning and general plan land use designation to allow the existing Riocon Motel and adjacent Tide Pool to conjunctively operate as a bed and breakfast inn. The applicant is requesting the use of bed and breakfast inn because it allows for kitchen facilities to provide meals to guests only. The Tide Pool Building has a kitchen facility used to assemble meals for motel guests. The project also includes a new guest suite with a kitchenette on the second floor of the Tide Pool Building. Both subject parcels are on the ocean side of Pacific Coast Highway and are considered beachfront. And both have been developed with two-story buildings, and no new improvements are proposed with these, with the proposed application. Both parcels have been granted coastal development permit approvals for remodels in anticipation of the proposed request. The number of rooms were reduced at that time from 22 rooms to 16. With the proposed guest suite that is part of this application, the total number of rooms will be 17. Low-cost overnight accommodations in lieu fee was paid for the 16 rooms, and staff is requesting an amendment to the resolution to include the in lieu fee for the proposed guest suite. The general plan land use designation for the Riocon Motel site is Community Commercial or CC, and the Tide Pool site is Commercial Visitor Serving or CV. Both sites are currently zoned CC. The applicant is requesting to change the Riocon Motel use, land use designation to CV, and the zoning for both sides to CV2. With the proposed changes, the existing non-conforming uses can be approved with a conditional use permit, which is part of this application. The conditional use permit also includes the sale of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption. Here's the site plan of the Riocon Motel. The site consists of parking to the east and a courtyard and decking along the center of the property. And here's the Tide Pool site plan. The parking is located along the parcel's frontage and along the west side of the property. An existing swimming pool and decking is located along the rear of the property. Staff conducted site visits and took the, the following photographs. These are photos of the Riocon Hotel site, and this next slide shows the. And this next slide shows the photographs of the Thai Pool site, for your reference. As mentioned before, staff is recommending some changes to the resolution, particularly regarding the overnight accommodation in-lu fee. Staff received a letter from the Coastal Commission, staff regarding the low-cost accommodation mitigation, and the applicant has agreed to add a condition requiring this fee. The condition is Condition 27, and we have it here on the slide. It states, "Prior to the effective date of the coastal development permit, the property owner must pay the lower-cost overnight accommodations in-lu fee in compliance with LIP Section 12.10 for the proposed increase of one room." There's also a request to make a change to Condition 50, which uses the word restaurant, and instead, bed and breakfast inn should be... Should be in that condition. And there are some references to motel or hotel in some of the conditions in the resolution, and this is because some of those conditions are standard conditions for hotel motels, but the... Those phrases should be changed to bed and breakfast, as that is the requested use for the site. Also, there were some public comments received today. In those comments, there were issues mentioned about whether the use should be, you know, should be identified as a hotel instead of the bed and breakfast. And this is because of the fact that there are amenities on the property. There are essentially two, or if you call the sale of alcohol, three amenities. One is the swimming pool, the second is the kitchen, and again, the third would be the sale of alcohol. The... The project is requesting the bed and breakfast use because in its definition, that use allows for kitchen facilities. So as part of the definition, that amenity is a permitted use as part of that. As it relates to the pool, the pool was something that was mentioned and discussed in great detail when the Malibu Inn Motel came to the Planning Commission. And at that time, the, you know, staff was asking the Planning Commission to give staff recommendation, or some direction on how to deal with the pool, as the code was not clear on that. And the Planning Commission decided to approve the project with the swimming pool as a permitted use. Again, that item is under appeal and is pending a city council decision. But that's the reason why staff made a recommendation in this case to allow the swimming pool to be part of the bed and breakfast inn, since the Planning Commission recently made a similar decision and was decided that that would be a permitted use for a similar type of use. Regarding the, again, I think I mentioned the kitchen. And I believe that's it. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt Resolution Number 23-46, making a recommendation to city council to approve the project with the suggested modifications requested by staff. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Adrian. Does anybody have any questions right now, or can we proceed with the applicant?
I have some.
John? Do you have a question now, or can we proceed with the applicant?
I'd like to ask the questions just to set the stage for information we get.
Okay.
And the first one is for Adrian. Directly across the street, we had a hotel approved for Norm, which involved the merger of two lots, both with development on them. And he was required to have a development agreement, pay approximately $4 million in fees, and it took many years. It was one of the things he was required to do was to pay for a... I can't remember, it was a half-million-dollar valve somewhere.
Norm said it's a gold valve.
Gold valve, yeah. The question is, number one, why is not this project required to pay for part of that valve? And number two, what is the difference between this hotel and that hotel? And three, if we are merging properties to make larger visitor-serving accommodations, could Norm buy the office building next to him, which is very large, and just make it part of his hotel? That's my first question. If you want me to go through all of them, I will, but that's my first question.
All right, we'll try to answer the questions. So the reason why this application wasn't required to maybe participate in the water improvements that Norm is required to do is because they are not asking for any new development. All the development is existing. The only request they're making is a request in terms of the use, not in terms of the development. And when projects are routed to the water district, they care about development. And so if they're adding square footage, they will require certain improvements or their approval, and in this case, that was just not the requirement. The other question about whether property can purchase, or whether Norm can purchase the office building next to him, that's not an application before us. I can't really speak to that. I can't tell you whether that would be okay or not. I guess we would have to wait until that happens, and then we'll evaluate it, and I can give you an opinion at that time.
Okay, and just to follow up a little, adding a kitchen and food service and basically bar service is not considered development in intensity of use of water?
It's considered development in terms of the local coastal program. It's not considered development in terms of what triggers the need for a water district approval.
Well, I'm not talking about approval. I'm asking usually when you build a public amenity like the right-turn lane at Webb Way, further development has to participate in that cost. It appears we're not having anybody participate in that cost, which is usual, and development that covers more than the building itself.
Yeah, again, I can't really speak to the water district requirements. All I can say is, this application did not require the review, and that's typically because there was no increase in size to the building. That's what I'm... That's what I'm familiar, triggers their requirement. But I'm not sure if there are other reasons why, other reasons that trigger their review. But in this case, they did not require review of this project.
Chair, if I may, ask for clarification on that? We're talking about two different things. We're talking about increased development. We're also talking about whether this is or isn't that. Also, intensification of use in terms of the water. And here, we've got more kitchen use, another bedroom added in the conversion. So when we looked at the other hotel recently, there was an increase in the water use, and, you know, we could maybe talk about fixture units, right? The use of those that caused that whole hoo-ha about having to go back and ask the water board, is this still within the agreement? But that was, an intensification of use mattered to, in terms of the water at that point.
But that also mattered because you required a different water main and everything else. If that's not what they're requiring here, then you can't just impose that on somebody willy-nilly, out of nowhere. They already have it. Development's existing. So I just don't even understand where we're going with this.
Because the usage would increase. So the question is, what is, how do they define it? Is increased usage one of the factors that would trigger it?
I really don't know the answer to that question, to be honest. I think we would have to have a conversation with the water district.
Well, or an assessment district. Okay, so the next question is... Part of what they're asking for in this...
John? Yeah, I think we need to have the applicant speak here, and then we can go into all these questions.
I would prefer to have the applicant know what we're gonna ask him and what we want to know.
Okay. I'll let you speak for a little bit longer, but let's try to wrap it up.
Okay, well, they are asking for the ability to serve alcohol, although they already have an ABC license, and you can't get an ABC license without a letter from the city saying it's okay for the ABC to give them a license. How did that happen? How do they have an ABC license?
Yeah, that's a great question. I think they'll be able to answer that. To be honest, I don't know when they acquired the license. I would expect, I would suspect that they've had the license since before the city incorporated. Again, this is a legal non-conforming use in the sense of, it's been operating as a motel, and the motel is not a permitted use under the existing zoning, and that's why they're requesting to rezone the property. My guess is the sale of alcohol falls under the legal non-conforming use as well. You know, one of the things is that we don't always know what the, what ABC will be requiring in terms of them issuing the license. And so we've had projects approved without the language that we added to the resolution for the public benefit and necessity, I believe is what it's called, letter from the city. And when we've had projects approved without that language, without authorizing staff to do it, we've had to bring those items back to the Planning Commission. And so not knowing whether that's gonna be required or not, we're adding it to the resolution so that if it is something that the, that ABC will request, then we would have the ability to do that without bringing that item back to you. So it would just save staff time.
Okay, so you're saying the city never issued a letter saying they could do it?
That's correct.
They revealed to us, it was in the staff report, that they're going to have food service from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., internally and externally of the building. Can you just give us a real quick reason why that would be considered bed and breakfast? When it's breakfast, lunch, and dinner, and drinks all day long?
You know, the bed and breakfast definition, the code does not stipulate that the serving of food is limited to breakfast. Again, it is a conditional use permit, so it is before the Planning Commission, and it's up to the Planning Commission to decide whether what they're requesting is appropriate or not.
Okay, and then the last real quick question is, they don't appear to require a CV2 zoning for a bed and breakfast on that property. Why are we considering, or being asked to be considered, giving them a CV2, which allows a hotel, when they're saying that they don't need it, and it's a bed and breakfast? And is not that opening it up to become a hotel at any moment they want to?
Well, in order to change it to a hotel, they would have to also increase the number of parking spaces that would be required for that. But this is the application that the applicant requested us to process. They did not want the CV1 zoning. They requested CV2 zoning. And CV2 zoning is a zoning that allows the uses that are currently there to be processed with a conditional use permit.
So you didn't... I'm wondering why the staff report does not mention anything about the fact that a CV2 is not required to operate what they're applying for, and why staff would recommend a CV2 on this project?
Again, CV2 works for the uses that are there. So that's the use they requested, and as a result, you know, that's the use we're recommending. We did have a conversation with the applicant about their options, and they were pretty insistent on keeping the CV2 zoning because that gave it more flexibility.
Okay, but let me put the question real quick, and then I'll be done. If they got a CV1, they could do everything they're asking to do right now. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the CV2 was just an up and extra. They could buy the apartment building next door and add it to this. If they got that zoning changed, then they got a hotel, right?
They would have to get the zoning changed for that, but they don't have to purchase the property next door to make the site a hotel. They can do the improvements necessary to do that, and then that would be back here for your consideration.
Okay, let's go ask questions. All right, I have the speakers.
Okay. All right. John, you're gonna have 15 minutes, and you can reserve some time for rebuttal.
I'd like to reserve five for rebuttal, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just know that the clock's gonna tick down from 15, so you can...
And if I need, I can save a few.
And I'm totally okay if you finish in two minutes.
Well, good evening, Chair Peak and honorable commissioners. My name is John Heinz, and I'm with Lathamaw Watkins, and I'm here along with my partner, Mr. Jim Arnoni, and we represent the property owners of Broadway Ventures LLC and Waybreak LLC. We are really grateful for the opportunity to present this project to you all today. So I know you all are very aware of the Riacon, but it's an existing 16-room motel. In May 2013, the Planning Commission approved the remodel that was then undertaken and completed in 2016, and it opened in the spring of 2017. I did want to address, there was a question about the waterworks, and that during the remodel of the custom Malibu during that project, the owner did have to pay around $220,000 to Waterworks in connection with the future Sweetwater storage project. So, you know, when they were going through the remodel, they did do that. So I'll just point that here. No physical changes today. So just giving a little bit of background, the Riacon really is a tranquil place, and that's what it strives. It's a serene setting. It's a place where visitors can go and see the beauty of Malibu, where it's quiet and peaceful. The Riacon currently observes quiet hours now from 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., and it intends to continue those quiet hours with this approval. The adjacent Thai Pool property is the former home of the Thai Pool Gallery. It now includes a gym. For those of you who have seen it, it's a small gym. It's got a few bikes and some weights, but small gym. It has a pool, office space, storage, and a kitchen. But the pool's been closed since 2017, since July 2017. So the pool's not been in use since that time. So you saw from Adrian, there's a number of requested entitlements, but this is really a simple project. There are no physical changes that are being proposed, no structural changes. The applications were first submitted in 2015, so it's been a long road for a simple project, but again, we're happy to be here today. So as I mentioned, there's no structural changes, and it has been discussed, we would be converting an existing office space into a guest... be converting an existing office space into a guest room and then the two project, the two properties would operate conjunctively as a bed and breakfast inn. Talking just a little bit about the use, as I mentioned, we'll continue to observe the quiet hours between 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m., seven days a week. Only registered RiaCon guests will have access to the gym and pool and food and drink will only be available to guests at the RiaCon. There won't be any meeting rooms and there's no bar area. Just to touch briefly, um, the RiaCon will have an average of six employees serving its guests across three shifts. There'll be parking sufficient for the 17 rooms and staff. And, you know, we're thinking about the benefits of this project. The existing use generated about $850,000 in TOT in 2022 and with this approval, uh, we project that that will increase, uh, in the coming years. There was environmental review conducted. Staff prepared an initial study negative declaration that confirmed that there were no potentially significant environmental effects. Environment, the environmental review board considered it and didn't have any recommended changes. So here we are, this is the request. This is, we respectfully request the recommendation of the approval. Now, it's been a long road, but this is a simple project. It will allow the guests of the RiaCon to use the pool. It will allow another room to be used and rented. And that's what we're asking for today. So thank you for that. I, I would like to answer a couple of the questions. Commissioner requested the, the, the floor area ratio, so I believe that's in the initial study of the addendum, so for the 22752 PCH, uh, it's .31 and then on the 22762, that is .17. Talking a little bit about why we are requesting the CV2. Again, we are seeking a bed and breakfast in use, it could be in a CV1, but this has been a very long process and if at some point in the future, we did want to seek a CV2, that would have to go to you, but then it would also have to go through a zone change and we'd have to go back before the coastal commission. So again, if we ever did want to seek a hotel and we're not seeking that now, we would have to come back to the city, get a CUP and demonstrate that. But that's why we would like the CV2 at this time. Um, and then finally, there was, um, discussion about how we were able to serve, uh, alcohol. Uh, since the RiaCon opened, there have been ABC permits and we received appropriate approvals for those permits. How'd I do? I kept it under 10?
You're doing good. You got over nine and a half minutes left.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, John. Uh, Joe?
Planning Commission, financial conflict knows no distance or applicant boundary. So Malibu Township Council is opposing this mainly as we have opposed the Malibu Inn Hotel project, similarly for the pool, the parking, the traffic, affordability, and septic size issues. At least it is not cutting out over 20 million pounds of coastal bluff. However, the applicant's whole proposal is entirely supported on a plethora of variances that should be required. The planning department needs to follow that Malibu LCP codes for the application and request these variances. Firstly, the pool, all swimming pools in both CV1 and CV2 must be open to the public as to the Malibu LIP. They both have a specific footnote number nine that states pool use is permitted only if available for the general public. So the best case is a variance could possibly be granted for a hotel, not a motel or inn. The parking requirements for the hotel, it's a hotel, not a motel or inn because the parking spots are not directly outside the room doors. I don't know why the city ignores this factor. And has accessory uses such as all-day dining, a restaurant, alcohol services, massage gym, et cetera. I mean, give them the CV2 now for this project so that they don't tear down something else and build more, I don't know. Hotels require two parking spots per room and one per employee, so a minimum of 42 spaces with an eight, with eight employees listed in the negative declaration, so that means they are at least 17 parking spaces short. The driveways to the east and west of this property provide only 25 spots. They are grossly underparked and will cause even further traffic and parking problems along PCH such as caused by Nobu. More accidents and deaths will happen here. They also use this site to have fast cars and race cars tested nearby, apparently without any proper permits. I have seen you all, I've sent you all the review from the New York Times showing it's hardly low-cost accommodation. How much did they have to pay for the 16-room hotel in the first place? Because it's not zoned for hotel use, an LCP amendment needs to be completed. Parking is not allowed anywhere further than 300 feet from the property as we ruled in the Malibu Beach Inn's application for change in parking and a pool was denied a few years ago. The lack of parking required for the zoning change will increase the number of cars into the driveway, et cetera, and likely cause more accidents. The negative declaration traffic analysis doesn't reflect the reality of the traffic problem in this part of the PCH. Realistically, there's a traffic gridlock and severe traffic backup on a regular and continuing basis during rush hour, on weekends and in the summer, and it is insignificant and not mitigable. The project will create car trips making the traffic situation incrementally worse in this already jammed, underparked area. The fire at Soho House last year caused terrible traffic backup during evacuation and emergency vehicles could not even enter the driveway and this right-turn only setup will only cause worse delays and risk to patrons. And then you got the rest of my email, so that's it for now. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Zoom speaker.
There are two raised hands. First is Ryan.
Yes, I wanted to say that it's, it's, uh, unnecessary to upzone beyond the uses being proposed. That's kind of a red flag. We've just heard about the inadequate parking and that you've got two uses that are maybe overused as it is and now you want to combine them. I'd like to know some very specific things and I want the staff to answer, and that is if each of the existing hotel rooms and as proposed, if approved, will have fire sprinklers inside them. This is a jam-packed area. We've had evidence that the fire department has trouble with all of the traffic impacts in the general area and that, uh, trying to approach and fight fire from the east, they may have to go out and walk on the beach, um, i- if they can't get in the parking lot with their trucks. So the intensification, um, is a water intensification, but that also triggers sewage intensification if you're installing soaking tubs, as has been mentioned on the, the review articles from the international accommodations industry. This has been operating as a hotel and, um, when, when you, uh, join the use to the Nobu Restaurant, which is another parcel at, uh, 22706 PCH, it's not been analyzed or mentioned. That's a product of a defective parking association. It just doesn't work. It's proven to be in a, a problem and there's some proposed traffic mitigations for the area that has not yet occurred. We're not even sure what they are, but I think the same attorneys are trying to get a free traffic signal out of the, uh, the, the city's, uh, taxation, uh, gas tax and so forth and traffic signalization to get a free traffic signal, which I, I find insulting, really. I think there's some hours of operation on Nobu that I don't know that they can provide the meal service for breakfast. I'm not sure they're allowed to be doing that. Um, and talking about cooking and exporting takeout food off-site, that's a whole nother thing. We heard about that in Paradise Cove. Uh, the pool element requires people taking more showers. That's gonna create more water use and more sewage generation as well. And the kitchen use, it triggers more analysis and proof of the, this, uh, sewage, uh, generation and disposal. The hotel use is two parking spaces per, uh, residence unit. And adding an additional residence unit is a very big deal here. It's not, it is an intensification. I would call that new development and it's a new use. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Bill Sampson.
Good evening. I guess the Carney is coming to town. We got Ringling Brothers and Barnum and Bailey coming in here and they're gonna play three-card Monty with us, Rubes, or us, Rubes Dollars, anyway. Which card is it? Is this a hotel? Is it a motel? Is it a B&amp;B? Is it gonna be quiet? Well, I don't know. We say it's gonna be quiet after 10. We say we're gonna be serving booze until 11. I can't reconcile those two. Serving more booze in that area is probably not a great idea. We have a public servant who just said, well, he's been nailed a couple of times for 62 and a 45. Let me tell you something about traffic cops. They write you for 62, you were going faster. How do I know? I was young once. It's been a long time now. I don't drive that fast anymore, except on a track. There you can drive really fast. But 62 there with alcohol being served, do we need more booze on Pacific Coast Highway? The question answers itself. Even without booze, those four lovely young ladies were killed. We think it was without booze anyway. Uh, there's plenty of others going on out there. Uh, this place is not gonna attract a lot of Corolla and Prius drivers. It's gonna attract a lot of Lambo drivers. It's already designed to do that. They don't have enough room to park them. After all, as we well know, every Lambo requires two parking spaces or three, depending on if they think they should get them. How are you gonna fit all that in there? This thing's, this thing's a hotel. Until, hey, we don't have enough parking. Well, let's call it a motel. Oh, wait a minute, there's a swimming pool. Well, let's call it a B&amp;B. Well, I don't care what you call it. You're having a, you're having a kitchen, you're having alcohol, you're serving alcohol where you're serving it. Sounds like a bar to me. Maybe it's a private bar. Putting all of that out on our highway with a bunch of exceptions for somebody just doesn't comply with our mission and vision statements. Turn them down. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody else?
No, those are all the raised hands.
All right, thank you. John?
Okay, just to answer a, a few of the points, some of the comments seem to assume a hotel, but we are not seeking a hotel. We're seeking a bed and breakfast inn. Right now, it operates as a 16-room motel, so with respect to the traffic, we'll be adding one room. It is fully parked. Again, it operates right now as a 16-room motel. There will be 25 spaces after and there's not always very many cars at the place. Again, there was, there was a question about onsite wastewater treatment or, you know, sewage disposal. Again, there are existing fixtures here and the systems are sited and designed to receive the flows from the conjunctive use. And then with respect to the alcohol, there's existing alcohol service at the RiaCon. There haven't been any troubles associated with that use. There's not a bar area proposed. We generally expect that this will be in rooms, there are decks, but there's not a bar area, so, um, that's it.
All right, thank you. We may call you up, uh, for some questions here in a little bit. Commissioners, who would like to start? Uh, I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna start with John, cause he's on our Zoom. John?
Okay, I just, well, I would like to come back to some, but, um, first, I guess this is to Adrian. The, when we inspected the new guest suite, I guess they call it, it had a full kitchen and various other amenities where, and I'm wondering how staff is recommending it when the LIP defines a guest room as having no sinks or outlets that can be used for cooking facilities. And there doesn't seem to be a part of this that requires them to take that out, even though they probably never got a permit to put it in. So, uh, what's the, what's the justification of violating the definition of a guest room?
I'll have to look at that definition. This is a bed and breakfast again, and the definition of bed and breakfast does allow for kitchen facilities.
But the LIP defines guest room as not allowing those. And that's, that's my question. It's very clear it's in the definition of the LIP.
What part of the LIP are you referring to, John?
The definition section on page three.
Okay.
Now, unfortunately, I can't give you sites on all of these because I, I just don't have them, uh, right here. I had them at home, but that's, that's a, a fair reading of what it says. Now, again, several times it's been brought up that, that they don't need a CV2. And they apparently answered and it was a little bit evasive, but, um, you know, that's what they pay lawyers for. Why, what, what justification does the city have to give a permit that is not required? Or give a zoning that is not required for the use requested? And is it common to give people upzoning just in case they want to change their mind later? Because, as you know, hotels in Malibu sell for up to a million dollars a room. So this is a big gift. So I'm wondering how it's justified under the LIP.
I, I didn't really know if there was a question there.
Well, the question there is, why would staff recommend a zone change to a zone that is not required for the use asked for? If I, if that's plain enough, I can make it plain.
I'm looking at Pat in case he wants to answer the question.
I mean, so, I mean, I will be somewhat redundant, um, and turn it over to Mr. Panas, but the, the, when you say, is it common, it's, i- i- it is very common for the city to accept applications, um, for zone changes and then process those at the request of the applicant. Once again, it is, it is before you all tonight. If you all feel that that, that that, you know, legislative policy is, 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 is not ideal, that's well within your discretion, but the, the staff does not articulate to the applicant what they should or should not do with their property, provided the applicant has a plan and says, here's my, here's my application, I want it processed. And that's, that's why we're here tonight.
That's my question to you. They do not have a plan for a hotel. They claim, but they want zoning for a hotel. Could I ask for a hotel in my, my house? Would the staff process that? Can I go from R1 to CV2? It has to have, in my opinion, it has to have some sense. And the reason given by the attorney was, well, we don't want to have to do it again when we want to, if we want to make it a hotel. Basically, that was the answer. So, does, has staff ever, okay, and I'm saying ever in 33 years, given a zone change for a project that does not require it? That's a question. Is there any example of that in the history of Malibu?
I don't know if I can, I can answer that question because the, the answer is, I don't know. We don't have a lot of examples of zone changes. I, I think in recent history, I would, I would agree with you, but, uh, there has been a number of rezones, um, before I was hired by the city and I can't really speak to those.
John?
Yes?
If I may sort of try to, I, I understand what you're asking in regards to the question as to, but the staff has to make a decision based on what the applicant is, is asking for. And what the applicant is asking for completely fits in the zoning that they're requesting. And furthermore, if they were to come back and ask for a hotel, they would be having to ask for another project or a crazy amount of variances because the way that I understand it, the requirements for parking for a hotel are substantially different than the requirements for parking for a motel. Is that correct, Adrian?
Yeah, and that's, that's my question.
Correct.
My question is, if I had a commercial property, and I do own commercial properties, I'll admit this, and if I had a gas station that, and I had the ability to buy the parking lot next to it, and I came in and said, well, I want a bed and breakfast because they don't have enough parking, but give me a. But give me a hotel thing, just in case I can pull it off and do a hotel, and I don't have to ask you again. Isn't there a relationship between use and granting of, of, uh, of zone changes? I mean, I was being a little facetious about going from RR1 to a, a hotel.
Okay, so do you, do you have any issue if they were to be just asking to keep it as the CB one versus it being CB two?
Well, I, I think that's my question. My question is...
No, my question to you is, do you have any issue with it being CB one? If bed and breakfast and motel fits in the other zoning, do you have any issue with that? Yes or no?
The only issue I, the only issue I have is, is bed and breakfast the right category? Okay, but yes. In general, if you ask for a use that you want to use and the planning commission decides that that use is reasonable in that area and they should upzone, and upzone always means more money for you, for a developer, always, uh, then it should be granted. But when you say, well, I got a house, but I'd rather have a hotel...
But John, do you think that this is a reasonable zoning for where it is? Yes or no?
CB two? No.
CB one?
If it was a motel, yes.
Well, it is a motel.
Well, that's your definition of a motel.
Well, it's not, I'm just, that's what's been presented to us.
Well, we're getting presented a bed and breakfast.
It's a bed and breakfast, the applications for a bed and breakfast.
Sorry, a bed and breakfast.
Yes, we're getting applied for a bed and breakfast. It's really breakfast, lunch, and dinner and bed. But that's something we can discuss later. I'm just saying, in general, has the city ever, and does any city ever, consider a zone change when there's no need for the use?
I think you heard the answer to that, and the answer might have been no, or that they don't know.
They don't know, and that's why I'm wondering why they recommend it.
Okay, so what, what, what other questions do you have?
If I may jump in, there are applications that come before the city where someone is just proposing a zone change and no use is proposed. Exactly. So there are two questions before this commission this evening. One being the CUP for the use, the second being the recommendation on the zone change. And it is within the purview of this body that if you believe that that zoning is too intense for that area, even though there are other parcels in the area similarly zoned, that is within your purview as your recommendation. But there is no mandate that the, that they have to be to that level of alignment. Now, obviously, it makes sense that there be some level alignment. You don't want to request a zone change that would in no way accommodate or facilitate the use being requested. Requesting a hotel use on a residentially-zoned property is drastically different than what we're doing here. But once again, it becomes a question of intensity, and it's up to this body to figure out if they believe that, that if they feel it's compatible or incompatible.
Okay. And we should consider that they can't, cannot park a hotel with this particular property. Now, I want to clear up the ABC license. They seem to, their attorney seemed to say that they got the license under their ownership, because the Tide Pool lady certainly didn't have a bar or, or an ABC use. She sold shells. Okay, so I, I still want to clear up how someone got what they claim is a valid license without the city approval, which has been required of every single project I've ever seen.
Okay, John, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the applicant to come up and explain that.
Okay, but I want to ask the, the staff directly. Did anybody in the city ever ask, send a request for ABC approval to the ABC?
So the answer is no, because that's not our standard practice. We typically do not go after properties for potential code violations until complaints are made.
Okay, so we never approved it. It's up for approval now. Now, I want to ask the attorney, how did they get one? If we're required to, okay it before you get one.
Okay, first off, I'd like to be clear. On the Tide Pool property, there's no alcohol service, and there's no approval for alcohol service on that property. That's what this application will do. That will allow us to go get an ABC license. The ABC license that we have is at the Riacon Motel. And that Riacon Motel was applied for and granted by ABC, and it has been in place since Riacon's been open, or shortly thereafter.
To make that clear, it was applied for without the city's request for need.
I, I don't think that it was required for the city to do that, though.
Well, while I'll have staff answer that because they've got a code violation that's coming on this project saying they're not allowed to. So staff, do you or do you not practice the, the ABC requirement of a request for need?
If I may, we, when you apply for the ABC license, you do have to put a city contact. So I think ABC would have, you know, spoken to the city if they needed to. But that would, the, the city contact would have been provided with the application.
Okay, so my question to staff is, was it? Because I don't know of any other business in Malibu that is operating liquor license without that.
Did our application include a city contact? Yes.
So my question to the city is, did somebody say, okay?
Adrian? I mean, I mean, the, the answer is, we've never done that research. So we, we don't know. We, we don't know anything about the, the liquor license as, as it exists today. They are requesting an application that's before you that would, if there was a, if there was a code violation, this application would alleviate that code violation because they're proposing a conditional use permit that would allow the sale of alcohol on the property. My understanding is the sale of alcohol has been there since Before City Incorporated. So if there was an application with the ABC, it didn't include the city, it would have included the county.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Adrian, the Tide Pool Gallery sold shells. They did not sell booze. Okay?
John, we're, we're talking about the Riacon with alcohol in the past. There, there's no allegation that the Tide Pool was...
We just got told that this was prior to the cityhood. That's nineteen ninety-one, okay?
For Casa Malibu, not the Tide Pool.
Tide Pool, same thing. Guest, guest drink.
If I'm...
Chair, Chair Peake, can we move on here?
No.
John?
Who has the right to shut me up?
John, please hold on.
I'm not going to be able to ask questions?
I was requesting the applicant to speak and give us some, shed some light on the liquor license.
Okay, fine. I don't know who said, shut me up, but okay.
Again, and I think it was made clear, and thank you, Commissioner Hill. Again, there's no liquor sales on the Tide Pool property currently. This was the Nobu Riacon Motel. And again, these applications were submitted several years ago. We don't know what the conversations were, but again, we have the liquor license, they were granted by ABC.
Thank you very much. John, another question not pertaining to the liquor license.
Well, I'll ask any question I want, but I will go on. Can the staff explain to us in a rational term how food service can have, well, number one, the way, how we got here? When this originally came up to change the Tide Pool Gallery to a pool, and it was later determined that the pool wasn't zoned in that area. In the meantime, we had a guest suite, a gym, and a commercial kitchen, a very large commercial kitchen, not for sixteen people. And three wolf ranges, you know, major prep areas, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
John, I only saw one wolf range, not three.
Well, okay, one with how many burners? But anyway, certainly not a bed and breakfast. How did that happen before this application came in? Did the city just decide, well, let them have a, a kitchen in a building that's supposed to be an office building? That's a question to staff. How did they get that kitchen?
I'll have to research. I think the applicants will probably answer that question, but everything that they have was permitted by the city. We, we did look at records that show the kitchen and everything that you see there today. I'm not sure when those approved or how they were approved, because again, we didn't do the research on that.
Did you say somebody at the city approved?
They were either approved as part of the CDP that came before the planning commission, or they were approved subsequent to that.
Okay, and would they have had to come to the planning commission since they're not a office building use?
Not necessarily. If the changes were changes that could be done without a discretionary request that required planning commission approval, that would have been handled administratively.
So you're saying a CC zone can have a commercial kitchen?
I think that decision was made. If in fact, the, the kitchen was approved administratively, that decision was made, uh, that, that it was something that staff could approve. Those decisions were, again, made many years ago, and the people that made those decisions no longer work for the city.
Well, that's not a good excuse. I mean, come on. Now, this, this is supposed to be a, a health club in a CC zone, and the city approved a gym. But it's a CC zone, which requires general public. But it only had one member. And was that approved by the city, the gym?
Again, we didn't do any research on the existing uses and how they got to be what they are. That was not part of the review of the application, and we don't do the research to establish legality on, on a lot of these issues. We had an application that we're going to bring all those uses into compliance with the code in case they were established without the proper process or, you know, whether they were done, you know, in conformance with the code or not. And the applications before you would, would alleviate any violations that may exist.
So, so my question is, you, you're saying that, yeah, there probably were some violations, and we don't know who, who approved them, but we're going to fix it now. My question is about piecemeal.
John?
We were told, we're told in this application that, oh, this is all there, and it'll fit right in with a hotel. But it wasn't it, okay? It was not there when this application came in for the pool in 2015. Period. It was not there. And you go back and look at the staff report, and it will not be mentioned. So when you, and then it, it, when it talks about health clubs being approvable, it talks about substantial health clubs, not six bikes. That's not a health club. That's an ancillary use of a motel. And we are told that, oh gee, sure. Well, anybody who visited there saw the connection between the hotel and this use. But it was never approved to be used as an ancillary use of the hotel, motel, whatever you want to call it. So I'm just trying to get at the process of how this is happening and what's happening. Essentially, we went from a place that sold seashells to getting zoning for a hotel. Without any uses that they're approving now, they weren't happening. They, they were happening all along. And so we've had a motel there for ten years. The city just participated in, in making it look the same. That's, that's a problem with me when it comes to CB two is now we're going to maybe have a couple other buildings next door become hotels without the planning commission ever knowing it. We never knew any of this happened. And the city staff, in my opinion, went along with it. Now, and that's why I think it's a big stretch to say breakfast, lunch, and dinner till eleven with drinks on the patio. When we actually turned down a hotel with a CB two license that had been here for twenty-five years, we said, no, you can't have a pool. You don't have enough parking. No, you can't do it. You're eight feet too far from the parking lot. And we're taking a place that sold seashells and saying, yeah, you can be CB two and have a pool.
Chair?
There becomes a question of equity here. And that's exactly what happened. I mean, unless somebody can tell me it didn't happen that way. And Scott, you lived here when the Tide Pool Gallery hears it, so it's correct. Okay? And you know that's true.
John?
Yeah?
You've been talking for almost a half an hour.
Yeah, and did I say anything that was not pertaining to this case?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that there's another four commissioners up here that have questions too.
I'll come back later. I'll let everybody else go.
All right, thank you. Dennis?
Why are we talking about when George Bozilinski was in, in planning director? Why aren't we talking about tonight? I, whatever happened then doesn't have anything to do with now. And trying to find out from staff what they did wrong or did right, or who did this or did that, has nothing to do with it. It's already there. We're talking about tonight and what's going on with these guys tonight. What, how, how the kitchen got there, how the pool got there, how the seashells got there, I don't care. That has nothing to do with what we're talking about tonight.
Craig?
I have several questions, observations, clarifications, but I'd like to make a motion to recess for five minutes so we can reset, clear our minds, clear our bladders, come back fresh.
All right, we're going to recess and be back here at eight-thirty. Do I need a roll call for that or no? Great. See you. Don't talk to us about this, please. Thank you. All right, everybody, welcome back to our meeting. And Craig, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. We're all here, okay. John, is John here?
Yes.
Okay, he's here. All right. So my first question, you know, I pretty much agree with what Commissioner Smith said about not dwelling on the past. However, I do have one question that does seem important about the past, which is, and this is for staff, probably either of you guys. Why was this zone CC in the first place if it was already the Casa Malibu motel? And my concern and my wonder is, you know, that's community commercial, and it's supposed to be community-serving as opposed to a visitor-serving motel. My thought is just that if the obvious choice would have been to call it CV of one sort or another, it wasn't called that. So it makes me wonder if there was some kind of side agreement, or some kind of deal, or some kind of deed restriction, or something outside the scope of anything we've seen that says, you know what, we might want to, this was the intention then, we might want to be preserving that now. What might we be getting rid of now?
That's a great question. And the fact is hard to tell without going back and figuring out what, you know, whether this property was specifically discussed. What we do see is that there are a number of inconsistencies from when the zoning code was originally adopted. Some decisions were deliberate, some were just oversight. And in this case, you can see that the Tide Pool site has the general plan land use designation CV, and yet the zoning is CC. So that's clearly an oversight on that property. Was the general plan land use designation meant to include both properties? Or maybe it only meant to include the motel and not the Tide Pool site? It's hard to say at this point, but clearly there were some inconsistencies. We've seen that a lot, and we have a few projects, one that will be coming your way where we feel it was clearly an oversight. And, you know, there's also inconsistencies, not just from between general plan and the city zoning, but there's inconsistencies between our zoning and the local coastal program. So at some point, we would like to bring that map to have a discussion on all these discrepancies. But in the meantime, we're bringing those on a case-by-case.
Okay, so just to clarify on that, the Tide Pool could have been CV well because it was pretty much sort of touristic art anyway. And can you, so you're, are you, can you assure us that by switching out of CC, we're not abrogating some past agreement?
Well, there's no past agreements. It's a, again, whether the decision, made that decision deliberate or not, that decision at the time would have been in anticipation of what the uses they wanted to see there. If, for example, if they, if there was, if they were aware of the hotel and that they were aware that a CC zone would not allow a hotel, or a motel in this case, and they deliberately decided to zone it CC, then that decision would have been made so that in the future, at some point, that motel would go away, and then there would be a use that would be more compatible with the CC zone. But it's hard to tell whether, again, it was deliberate or not. We've seen a lot of cases where there were just oversights.
Okay. That, I don't know if it's a red flag, but it's kind of a yellow flag for me. But moving on, it seems obvious to me, you know, the emperor's new clothes or whatever, it seems obvious that this is a hotel and what is being proposed. It can't be anything else because of the ancillary uses. We've got, just, and to clarify, so we're all on the same page here, I'll read the brief definitions from the LIP. A bed and breakfast inn is a facility offering transient lodging accommodations to the public and providing kitchen facilities adequate to provide meals to the guests of the facility only and not otherwise open to the public. Okay? And then a hotel is a facility offering transient lodging accommodations to the general public, same as the bed and breakfast, and providing additional services, such as restaurants and meeting rooms, such as, additional services such as. So what we're talking about here is, we have had a RioCon on one property, we have had a, I'll do it this way for the public, RioCon on one property and a gym on the other that's arguable about its status as a membership club, that's a separate issue, but it's a separate enterprise that, on paper. And now we're talking about merging them and saying that will now be an official additional use associated with what had been a motel or a bed and breakfast. And likewise with the pool, we're bringing that in, that's making it an additional use part of the, that makes it a hotel. We've also got additional uses include the alcohol, the food all day, the room service. We've heard they do massages. I think that came from the New York Times article. And I said, what about the car parking? You need a valet, right? They said, oh, we don't have a valet, we have a bellboy. But that's, whatever you call them, you're not allowed to park your own car there. You can't park a car. You have to, so, I mean, call it a bellboy if you want, but it's a valet. So I think we're looking at a hotel here, and that may or may not be fine. There's a good argument, this is the place to do the, sort of the visitor-serving district where you've got the hotels and the restaurants and all that. The flip side of that argument is, well, there's a lot of issues about traffic and complexity and accidents there, and we want to keep things simpler. So that's the trade-off there. But irrespective of that trade-off, if you're talking about a hotel, and we are, then we have the parking issue. We just can't get around that. We have these additional services, we'd need that number of parking spaces. So to my mind, I see some issues here that are things that I would want to see this continued over so that we could find them out. And I'll just read a few bullets here for staff. As long as we'd be going back, I'd want to know, double-check that there wasn't a reason why a property that already had a motel on it was zoned community commercial. That seems really weird. What was actually approved in 2015, circa 2015, as John was saying, what on the Tide Pool site? And what have they been doing for the last eight years that was not approved then? Oh, I'm skipping one here now. My concern's about the FAR. This is a question, but we, here, you're supposed to have, in one of these zones, an FAR no greater than .15. Here we have on the address ending in 52, the RioCon address, FAR of .31. More than twice as dense as what it's supposed to be. And on the Tide Pool, we have .17, a little bit more dense, and so the average density is still substantially more dense than it's supposed to be. So my question is twofold on that one. One, wouldn't we have to be applying a variance of some kind, and/or, or does that kick us into the territory of a development agreement? Or how do you, I mean, I know, I'm looking at, thinking about Norm's Hotel and what he's had to do over there, because he had a high pre-existing FAR, and he was required to address that through a, some kind of consideration. So I guess, so staff, what is the mechanism that we don't apparently have in front of us here about how to address that high FAR?
Isn't this an existing non-conforming building? Am I missing something there?
Until we're talking about intensification, we're adding, Ryan was right, adding another room, that's another intensification of the use.
The room is existing, you're not adding development, so I don't understand.
It's not existing as a RioCon room.
You're changing the use of it, but the development is existing.
It was never approved.
And it was never, and it was never, it's, you're changing.
The square footage, hold on, the square footage had always been approved.
We're not talking about square footage, we're talking.
But you are, you're talking about FAR, that square footage.
If it was office space before, it's now a motel room or a hotel room?
My point is that it's existing, non-conforming, the structure's there. So I don't understand.
As long as we're making a zone change agreement, and we're resetting and saying, let's bring everything into conformance and make everything right, why would we just kind of look the other way and grandfather the non-conforming FAR? Don't we have to legitimize that somehow? Question for staff.
Yeah, the answer is no, but.
That is correct, yes. If they were doing something here that affected that particular issue, say the use, Norm's Hotel. Norm's Hotel proposed the addition, a construction of a new portion of the building, adding square footage. And the city's non-conforming section states that a building that was legally built prior to cityhood can be continuously maintained, unless, of course, you do some sort of new work to it. And this application does not propose that. If this application proposed some sort of development, yes, we'd be talking about FAR, and they'd have to figure out some way how to address the square footage on that property.
Okay, squaring that thought with what John has brought up, we don't know what on the Tide Pool side in particular has been approved or hasn't been, in terms of use, in terms of space. So it seems to me like that would be good to clarify before we go forward on that. Next point.
Hold on, on that thought real quick. Do you have any of the approvals of when this was redone? Do we have any of that info tonight?
So we do have the approvals. In fact, Richard was looking into this during our break. But to answer the question is, we know what the building looked like, we don't know the use. So we didn't do any research on the use, but we have clean record on the building. We know that there was, you know, there was a coastal development permit that was approved by the planning commission circa 2016, and Richard found an APR for some changes to that building. But there has not been an increase in square footage since. Any increase in square footage would certainly trigger the need for us to research what the square footage is, whether it's in compliance with the FAR requirements. And if it's not, then we would be processing a variance that would then be brought to the planning commission, but that was not the case. So they have not added any additional square footage, or if they have, that a square footage has been in conformance with the maximum FAR required.
Okay.
But they've added development. They added a swimming pool, which was declared nonusable because it was not used in that zone.
And now they want to use it.
And they shut it down for eight years, okay? Eight years. Now, that's adding an amenity that was not basically approved, okay? It sat there, but it could not be used. Nobody could put a foot in that pool.
I wanted to jump in when I was there today.
What?
I said, I wanted to jump in when I was there today, but they told me I couldn't.
Exactly, because it wasn't approved legally. It was added as an amenity to a hotel.
Okay, so John.
And now you're legitimizing it. Doesn't matter when it was built, it was never legitimate.
Okay.
Until tonight.
John, we got it.
Whenever this is over.
And John, I think that's a legitimate issue. I want to move on here. The, well, on the pool. We have that footnote nine, and that basically said that this pool use in either of these zones, the CV1 or the CV2, a pool is a, quote, "used permitted only if available to the general public." And I don't know how we're getting past that here. What's the rationale? What's, what's the rationale?
Didn't we get past that with the other project that we, it did get appealed? But it being available to the general public means any member of the general public can come and rent a room there and they can use the pool.
Yeah, no, that's, that's BS. You're, you're no longer a member of the general public if you are a guest in the facility. You become a guest. You're not general public.
Well, we, we did present this item to the planning commission and we discussed all the, all the code sections for the Malibu Inn motel. And as mentioned in my presentation, we asked the planning commission for some guidance on what to do with that pool because the code wasn't clear. We, we, you know, we presented the item as it, you know, the, the commission could consider the pool as an accessory use that would be permitted as part of the motel use. And accessory uses, or some accessory uses are not explicitly identified in the permit table. And so just because it's not on the permit table, it doesn't mean the planning commission doesn't have the ability to decide whether they believe it's an accessory use or a use that's incidental to the motel and it's one that can be approved, or, or it's one that requires a condition use permit based on what Commissioner Hill just mentioned, or it's not a permitted use at all, right? So all three options were presented to the planning commission and for that project, the majority decided to approve that project, which is again, why this project is before you with a staff recommendation. But, but it's, it's really up to you to, to make that decision.
If I may.
But it's not just possible.
John, John, if I may, if the, the code, you said the code is unclear. "Used permitted only if available to general public," that, that is absolutely black and white to me. I mean, general public is, is not a guest of a facility. It's the general public.
But that footnote is regarding recreational facilities.
No, no, no.
Which, which this isn't, footnote nine.
Recreational facilities parentheses, swimming pools, et cetera.
Right, as a recreational facility, but this is not a recreational facility, it's a primary use, this is a bed and breakfast, that's what's being presented.
Doesn't say needs to be, okay, so that, I think that's a real sticking point, and I think that we would need a, a variance at minimum to be putting that in. And as far as any discussion about what was done in the other motel recently, that's been appealed, so I don't know that there's any way that we can necessarily use that as precedent. It, it hasn't been adjudicated yet. So.
What about other properties in the city that have pools? Like the small motel at the bottom of Canaan, or the other motel down the highway that has a pool?
What are their zonings?
I'm, their zoning is probably CV two, but regardless, they don't require the public to use them. And I, I think that you're.
No, it's, you're, that's, all the pools at Malibu except the June Hotel, which was given a permit in violation of paragraph nine.
That's in your opinion.
Before, before the city, before the city, and it was never brought to the planning commission. It was slipped in under the table. Okay? And that's true. Never brought to the planning commission. So there's development that, yeah, and, and Dennis can say, oh, that.
All right, well, I'm, like, I'm not buying it. We can start with that with the pool. We want to keep talking about it, we can, but I think we're just wasting time.
Okay, so my, so just to wrap up my, my point, I, I will make a motion, building to a motion here to continue for information that is not clearly determined yet. A bullet list of these things would be, what was actually approved circa 2015 on the Tide Pool lot? What uses are or aren't, have or haven't been going on that were approved then? Secondly, we still have a question of whether the intensification of the use of the water and/or the septic with the intensified kitchen and the additional room now functioning as a hotel room?
I think we had testimony tonight that those facilities were done in conjunction at the same time and all sized accordingly. I don't know how.
The devices are sized to accommodate, but we have not gotten clarification. Staff themselves said, we're not sure what the water district says about that, is, is that, does that intensification of use constitute an expansion that deserves, that requires authorization? Okay, so next on my list, the city never issued the alcohol letter? That still seems like a question to me. Next, it's still not clear what we gave up with the CC zoning. Everybody's sort of, kind of shrugging and saying, well, you know, who cares? I don't know, it'd be good to know. I still think we need a, a variance for the pool in some way. And the parking, as a hotel, how do we address that? This, this to me is nothing other than a hotel. You've got the additional uses, you've got the alcohol, the food all day, the massages, the gym, the pool, the va, the bellboy valet. It's a hotel. It needs the double the parking, so. And, and if not, then it needs some kind of variance or something.
But so here's what I don't understand, okay? Based on the things that you're all, that you're saying and the things that John you're saying, you're clearly not going to vote for the project in any way, shape or form as what you've stated, so.
I, I could vote for it if we came back and we said, we answered some questions in a way that said like, yeah, these are all sorted and they're not uncertainties hanging out there.
You do realize that Vice Chair Mazza was on the planning commission during the times you were talking, right? So he's looked at all this stuff and he's commented on all this before, but he's acting like he's never had a pardon and or doesn't know what the hell anybody's talking about. That's pretty funny.
That is total BS. And, and you, you cannot say that because it's not true. And all you can say on the planning commission is, well, it's there, well, we never had it, it's a different planning director, oh, it's there, and why don't we let them do it, and, oh, they're nice guys, and et cetera like this. Sometime you have to realize that these things go to the coastal commission. They are going to get turned around and everybody thinks, oh, it's a motel, the coastal commission's going to love it. They aren't necessarily going to love a $4,000 a room. They're not, they're not going to necessarily love that.
They just wrote a letter and didn't care. Give us some money. They, they didn't say you can't do this. That's what the letter said today.
All right, so I just.
As a planning commissioner, and I hate for Drew to come in here on the first meeting and have planning commissioners go, oh, who cares what the laws say? Okay, the laws say you need two parking spaces.
John, that's not what anybody's saying here.
Well, that's what, that's what they're hearing.
Okay, I've put a motion to continue on the table. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Let's go for a roll call.
Now, before you go to roll call, remember, we have a planning department that has to do work, okay? And when you make decisions that do not jive with the LIP, which is superior to every code we have, you're just putting a ton of work on them because you don't want to have it continue until you get some answers. Okay? Instead of having, we've had how many hearings on the Malibu Inn and it hasn't even got even close to the coastal commission? And you often have to realize you have, you have a hotel, a CV two hotel, that we denied a pool to, okay? Denied a pool to. And you don't think they're gonna, they're not watching this? You have to go through the process and figure out what the questions are and what the answers are and how they fit the code.
Okay, so, so John, I have. John, I have a question for you. If we continue this hearing and you get this information that you, both you and Craig are requesting, are you going to vote to support this project?
If the information qualifies under the LIP, I will. Okay? But you say if we get some information, will you vote yes? Number one, Mr. Donegan will tell you that that's not legal for me to say that, okay? And I'm not going to say it.
Okay, well, I, I would just, it's really hard for us to all sit up here when the rhetoric goes in the direction of ripping things apart and telling the staff that they don't know what they're doing and that you, you don't have the information to make the decision. I'm comfortable to make the decision, but if you guys really want to get more information to help you come around to make a more educated decision on it, I would be inclined to support that. I just don't want to be talking in circles at the next hearing about all of the same, same things. Once you get the information from the staff and they provide it to you in a very professional manner, and then you tell them that they're not doing their job.
Well, I, I have heard tonight at least five occasions where the staff says, we don't know, we don't know how that happened. We don't know what happened, this or that. They're saying they don't know. They have, they, direct quote, we haven't researched that.
Right.
Okay?
And so Vice Chair Mazza.
And that's what we're asking for.
And so Chair, if I may, I mean, and so we've heard a lot of requests. I will say some of the questions that I, I have heard asked are unknowable, not by lack of research from staff. Why something is zoned CC is, you know, everyone in this room can have an opinion on why that policy was or was not made. So once again, I've, I've heard some questions that are a bit more specific and pointed. I've heard some other questions that are much more vague and. Or I, I would go even further, Mr. Chair, and say unknowable.
Yes, you've heard some unknowable questions, but you've heard some knowable questions too, haven't you? Are you arguing for it, Mr. Donegan?
Of course not, Vice Chair, I am not up here to argue, I simply.
Another quick question of staff, and maybe this is really easy. Ryan mentioned in his comment that something about a Jupa, Joint Use Parking Agreement? Is, is that real? Is that something?
That is not real, not, not part of this project.
Okay, thank you.
So let's go for.
And we have no traffic study either.
That's because they don't.
Don't need one.
Yeah, they don't need one. Can we have a roll call, please?
Oh, we don't, we don't need one for no, fifteen years with a city violation on.
Mr. Donegan, can you do something about this, please?
Unrelated, John.
Oh, parking down there is unrelated and traffic's unrelated.
You're talking about a different property that's not in front of us tonight. Thank you.
You're talking about a zone that is under investigation for.
Roll call, Vice Chair Mazza.
Being dangerous.
Commissioner Hill? Your motion to continue to a date uncertain?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
There are some questions that could be answered. I do feel that there's enough to try to make the decision tonight, so I'm very torn.
You can understand.
Yeah.
Correct, I would, I would advise against that.
I think it'd be interesting to find out exactly how the project did get to where it's at, so I will vote yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Absolutely not.
Chair Peake?
Negative.
Motion carries.
Was that a, was that a date certain or uncertain? Uncertain, I'm trying to make sure.
Date uncertain.
Okay.
Not now.
Already passed.
Hey, sir, if you may, could you come to the?
I mean, frankly, this strikes me as pretty outrageous because there's a lot of information already before this commission and ample to make a decision tonight, and this is very difficult for us to take at a sudden moment like this. If, if there is a need, we would request it to come back very soon to a date certain, and the idea of more time doesn't have to mean it's a date uncertain. My understanding is anybody in the majority could reconsider to, and at least do it to a date certain, or even reconsider and let us make a darn decision tonight because it's been pending for years.
I, I'd be happy to defer to staff's best judgment. How, how long will it take to track down these answers?
It's a great question. I, I think we're looking at at least two weeks to try to do the research and provide the answers and then, you know, because it's a, it's a 21-day notice, so a date uncertain may not necessarily be, you know, out of the question, I think.
Can we get it on the first meeting of the new year?
It would be the, the first meeting would be the second meeting, because the first meeting in, in January would be a dark meeting.
Okay.
What, what you're saying there, Chair, would be, it is a holiday on the, well, we're going to discuss dates, but just, that's the next item. But status quo, Monday afternoon, Monday evenings, that Monday of the 15th is a holiday, so that meeting would be held on Tuesday, the 16th.
On January?
That is correct.
I will make a motion that's continue to January 16th.
I just wanted to be sure we were having clear, so it'd need to be one of the makers of the motion, I believe, to move for reconsideration, and then of course it would be to continue to a date certain. In this instance, I believe you said January 16th, correct? Director Malika? So Commissioner Hill?
That's, we're trying to get you on the first meeting that we can have available for that, which is not going to happen in November because the schedule is full, because we don't need the noticing. It's not going to happen in the first meeting in December because that meeting's full, so it's going to push you into January.
What, do we not have the December 18th meeting?
Nope.
We can, if you want to. Would you like to have it to hear this item?
Sure.
Let's do that.
We should, absolutely.
Everybody's okay with that?
Absolutely.
Great.
I, I would like to suggest that we have a life.
You have one.
And then it's Christmas. You don't have a life, I have a life.
Gentlemen, can we, gentlemen, gentlemen. So, so Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Am I, am I hearing a motion for reconsideration or no? As of right now, the motion passed is one of date uncertain. In order to revisit that, we do need someone from the majority?
Yeah, if, if staff's comfortable that they could get it done by the 18th, I'd be happy to do it then.
So, so moved, a motion for reconsideration?
Yes.
To continue, continuing this to a date certain, in this instance, December 18th?
Did you mean December or January?
Said December 18th.
He didn't say December, he said the 18th. Did you mean December?
December, December 18th, 2023.
They can do that in that long, it's not that big a deal to come down here.
So if you made a motion.
So we're going to have a special meeting just for this.
You bet.
We'll probably have something else on the meeting by then, too.
And seven days before Christmas.
Yeah, Greenwater.
Okay, well, people who don't work.
Oh, Greenwater's the fourth.
And things don't have a life, other people have a life, but okay. I'm not going to second that.
Okay, I'll.
Drew, was that Dennis?
Me.
Drew's seconding that motion. All right, let's get a roll call, please.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
No.
Chair Peake?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Let's do it quick, but do it right.
Okay. All right, we are now at item 7A, which is basically our meeting days and start time coming up for next year.
A question, is that next year or is that immediate?
Let's make it immediate if we can.
Now, a question on that.
Okay, do you want to? Vice Chair Mazza, I think before we get into that one, we have a staff report, questions, it's a normal agenda item.
Let's do it. Richard.
Thank you, Chair, I appreciate your eagerness. The item before you this evening is, the staff is looking for some feedback and what that feedback, we'll come back to you with a resolution memorializing this, but we would ask that as part of the workplace culture, retention and recruitment actions that are being considered by the city council, two of the items that came up that could be considered by this body, one being looking at alternative days for the planning commission, if that's of interest to the commission, Tuesdays or Wednesdays. And the, the reason why staff has proposed that is that, you know, it would push us away from the weekend, which would give the ability to have more time to answer the questions that tend to come up on Friday afternoons, right before the meeting. And the second item for the consideration would be looking at earlier start times. The idea would be not so much to start earlier and end at the same time, but ideally shift this meeting to an earlier start and earlier ending, and, and really trying to make it basically that our late night meeting be city council and we don't have to keep staff here as long. meeting be City Council and we don't have to keep staff here as long. So with that, I'd like to have a discussion with the council, with the commission to get some direction. As I mentioned, what we would do is essentially update the resolution that guides the Planning Commission. And we have coming forward for the commission's consideration, and we'll bring this at your next meeting, would be your 2024 calendar. And what we've prepared, if there is an interest for the part of this discussion, is we've got both a list of dates if the, for Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, if that's of interest to the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. I'm going to start with I have to have Wednesday out, so that's not an option for me personally. And I was going to ask John if he has any comments on it.
Yeah, I, and as a matter of disclosure, after the City Council meeting, I talked to, in trying to be Brown Act, I talked to two City Council members about what that does to the workload of the Planning Commission and the public being able to participate. And I do believe that it is important, very important, that the public participate. And with that, we, the troubles we have is when we don't have public participation or knowledge. So first, for, let me just talk about the start time. Five o'clock essentially eliminates any working person who commutes from being on the Planning Commission or participates in the item 2A and some of the earlier items. And they have family obligations. They got to pick up kids. They've got to cook dinner. We haven't even mentioned dinner here, okay? So I think the early start time, it sounds great because the staff doesn't go, have to go home. I mean, staff gets to go home early. They listen to their item, they get to go home. They're done. But not us and not the public. So I don't know how many of
John, can I ask you this? Would you be in favor of moving up the start time to six?
I could consider that because there's a chance they can make it, okay?
But what about 5:30?
Well, I don't think any person who commutes from LA or has a real job, I mean, a nine-to-fiveer, is going to be here at six or 5:30. I don't think so.
So we could go with six, possibly?
Possibly. And then I think you all should consider if you have a family or if you have a reason to feed them, or if you want to eat, how are you going to do that with your family? Okay?
Well, that's very kind of you to consider me because I have a family and young children. That's so kind of you.
That's a consideration. And do you have to pick them up from soccer and all this kind of stuff? I mean, there's a reason why it was 6:30. That's so people could get here. Now, I'm also worried about where, where a planning commission is going to be here for a year, or at least two, two-thirds of us will, one-third of us will be, or two, two-thirds of us. When you go to the new, new City Council and you go to pick new planning commissioners, how many will be eliminated because they flat out can't come? And that's why the 6:30 was originally chosen. Now, the other problem I have
Let's stay on the, on the time issue before going to the days.
Okay, well, that's my opinion on the time issue is participation.
Okay, can we, we're going to come back to you on the days. Is that okay?
Yeah, sure. I'm just trying to be part of the
Anybody opposed to moving the start time to six?
Very firmly opposed.
Very firmly opposed.
I believe, I'm right with John. I think later is better. And to be clear, you know, we have discussions sometimes like, oh, we can't go so late at night because it's so late. And I think it's not so much because it's late at night that we can't make good decisions. It's because we've been going four hours intensely using our brains and that's when the decisions get bad.
Dude, don't use your brain so much.
Whether, whether we started, oh, that's how you do it. Whether you start at, you know, two o'clock or six or whatever, I think that's the issue about, you know, not going past 10:30 is just that it's four hours already. But I think we need to start
So you're firmly opposed to starting at six?
Well, I'm, I have one vote.
I know, but I don't, if somebody's firmly opposed to something, then I don't want to, you know, we don't need to. Now, Drew?
I was going to say, we have a virtual format. And I'd like to, you know, I like the idea of starting earlier if we can. You know, people can participate, whether they're in their car, or if they do have something, they can, they're going to be on schedule. They can make arrangements to be here.
How likely is it that the Zoom option disappears after the first of the year when the state
Hopefully sooner than later.
Well, but, so I just want to, the Zoom option, there's kind of a line of demarcation there. It's
Yeah.
Though the state is really, at least in my opinion, so take this with a grain of salt, the Zoom option is really directed towards you as officials. I think we can confidently say the state is not going to outlaw the city's ability to take public comment via Zoom or telephony. What those laws deal with are your guys' ability to attend.
Do we have any reason to be confident that the city will retain the Zoom option indefinitely?
And that I can't speak to. That
Well, let me ask another question.
Not us.
No, exactly.
Do we want people zooming from their cars as they're commuting? No, believe me, I'm on
I don't want you zooming from your car commuting. Okay, John, can I ask you about the days of the week?
Wait.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Hold on, hold that thought, John. Dennis?
Okay. I gave my speech. I love staff. They do a lot. I'm old school. I think people need to be here. I actually agree with the guy on the phone. Six o'clock would be it for me. Now, I don't, I don't think earlier helps us. I don't think people can get here quite as quick. But I'm, I'll go, I'll go in the middle of that 5:30 thing you were talking about and the 6:30 we have now, but I'll go six.
Okay. John, days of the week?
Okay, well, here's the thing I want to consider. What's happening now? For example, one of the hearings we got tonight, we got essentially late Thursday, okay? So you get Friday to wake up and try to read it if you don't have anything else you're doing. And it depends, some of our meetings are simple and some of them are 2,000 pages, okay? So we get to read it over the weekend and try to go visit it and try to come up with some questions and ask them. Now, what's happening is, and in general, what happens is, the appellants and the applicants on big projects come in Friday afternoon at three o'clock and dump a big load on us. Okay? That happens all the time. Well, I want to be able to read that. Okay? I want, I want the weekend to read that. And I don't demand people answer me on the weekend. I got to go visit a project sometime. We have five or six to visit. And then try to get it all done by the Monday after that, answering questions from the staff and researcher. And if you're doing an adequate job, that's what you do. Now, the problem with, and I discussed it with both council members, one on each side of the fence, by the way, is if we move it to Tuesday, we are going to dump on the staff Tuesday at four o'clock with questions. Because that's when we're going to get all our stuff. And all the stuff that we have to really worry about, the lawyer letters and all this kind of stuff. And that doesn't help staff. It doesn't help us because they cannot answer the question at that point. If they have a question that we send out over the weekend, they got all day Monday to answer. But now when it's four o'clock on Tuesday. And so it's really important, we have these periods where we're left alone to be able to go, go to, go to visit sites and read stuff and look at plans and et cetera. And so one of the council members discussed, and I think Mr. Donigan is going to have to weigh in on this, that there's an absolute prohibition of any comments if you had it on Tuesday after Friday. Because you're not, you're, you don't have the weekend to read them anymore. You just don't. And, but I assume that some kind of state law is going to say, gee, they can turn them in one minute before the meeting. But we need to be able to look at these things. This thing tonight was complicated. The Malibu Inn was complicated. All the big projects we have are complicated. And if we, we get all our information on
Can I, can I ask, so are you in favor of the meeting staying on Monday?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Craig has, Craig wants to interject here.
Yeah, a little clarification and then in my opinion. I could go with Tuesdays would be okay if, only if two conditions could be met. One, John just said, and maybe he just said them both, that we put a hold on, all correspondence is due by 5:00 PM on the Friday before. And he asked, his question was, is that something that can be legally done? And my answer would be, the California Coastal Commission says no correspondence later than a week prior to the meeting. So if, I would think if the Coastal Commission can say no correspondence prior to a week, then we should be able to say none prior to, you know, effectively three days.
Correct. So there's, the answer to that question, Commissioner Hill, is yes. The city can always institute a policy that says, you know, John or Jane Doe resident, you must have your comment in by five o'clock the Friday beforehand. Now, what we, what I would advise against is that does not mean if one of your constituents has your guys' email address, mailing address, cell phone, and they want to email you something, text you something. We are not going to prohibit it. And then, yes, if you look at it, then you're going to have to say, you know, I got a, I got an email from Jane Doe over the weekend and actually it raised something. So the city can institute the policy, but the absolute prohibition on contact with officials is another thing. And I do apologize for interjecting. We probably do need to open this up to public comment before we get anything further down the road of deliberations. Sorry, Commissioner.
Okay, oh, well, so I can't even finish.
We're going to come back to that idea. I think it's a good idea. John, can you hold on a second? Let me just clarify. Do we have any public comment? Negative.
No, there's one raised hand from Ryan.
Okay, let's go with Ryan. Let's hear his public comment. And Ryan, I apologize for not, I completely oversaw this. I apologize.
Well, it's a big problem. You've pretty much discussed it already. I've had my hand up the entire time. And only because I have cell phone numbers for the planning director and the recording secretary, I think it's even being considered. So I do object, and I'd like that in the record because I don't want it ever to happen again. The second part is, I think the City Council has in its resolution that it meets on the Tuesday following a three-day weekend. And so it's probably better for you to consider really a Wednesday if you don't want to have to be bumped. I think it benefits the staff, frankly. You should not be so selfish about yourselves as commissioners, but it, you're talking about giving staff the extra time and breathing room to do the responses and questions that do come up over the weekend when you're reading your thousand-page reports before the night of the meeting. When does a staff get to eat dinner? It's a big question. So not literally, they don't have to tell you that. But what I'm saying is, I think you really ought to be considering Wednesday. It's kind of the dead night of the city. There is no conflict. And that you should probably be meeting the first and the third Wednesday so that you don't get into the holiday situation in like November, December, like it's coming up. And consider the Wednesday option, which staff did map out for you. They stated that there were three dates, essentially the no change, which is Mondays. And I think your start time of 6:30 actually does work. I would suggest you make the date change and maybe some of the clarifications can be made on the Monday and the Tuesday before the Wednesday meeting. And the Wednesday meeting may go sooner, quicker because there's less discussion of these outstanding questions of staff that might be answered outside the meeting arena. And the 6:30 start time is just fine. So that's my recommendations is give it a try. Try it on Wednesdays and see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Ryan. And again, I apologize. That was my fault. Nobody else's fault but mine. So Craig, why don't you finish your thought?
Yeah, okay, so basically, what were we saying? That the Tuesday, okay, so I had something on that that I wanted to add, but my, the other side of it is to say, it's really helpful to have the two weekends to review so that if we were going to move it to Tuesday or Wednesday, for that matter, I would still want the nominal packet coming out the Friday, two weekends before, right? So you can get a jump on it then, jump on it later. So I think that's really important. And I don't, I would really like to figure out a way to make it work so that what happened this past week doesn't happen much or often where we get something late Wednesday, you know, especially, I mean, if it's like really a simple thing or a consent item or something, maybe, okay, but that was, that was a bit much. And, and so that, I think it's re, oh, I know what I was going to say about the Friday deadline. It's a question of culture. That once the public understands, hey, these planning commission things, those are pretty complex and they need some time to review our comments, you know? I mean, I understand the Coastal Commission. If I ever wanted to say something to them, I know I need to get it in a week in advance. That'll get around and maybe we won't get so many of those emails that you were talking about from our friends the night before, right? So
I have a question for you. If we wanted to make that requirement of, you know, let's say we move it to Tuesday, saves time, but we want that requirement to have that information coming to us in advance, is that something that has to go to the council or can we make that decision? Rebecca?
We have traditionally followed the City Council's practice, which they allow processing of correspondence and distribution up to about half an hour prior to the meeting or as practical. And that's what we state in ours and every agendas has the request that the public submit correspondence at least three days prior to the meeting to allow for full commissioner consideration.
Could
The rule, the rule is that the commission makes its own rules.
That's what my question is for.
That is, that is in the commission rules.
I do have a question. What is the cutoff date for local newspapers so they could publish our
It's Wednesday.
It's like Monday, really, Monday.
Monday, Monday at two o'clock. Well, actually, actually, that is not true. It's everything but the planning commission. And they have Cynthia Bravo come in and write up until midnight, write, write the story on the spot. So if we move it to Tuesday or Wednesday, it will not be covered by the newspaper until a week later unless they have something else.
There's always a reason that things are done the way that they are.
Well, the reason it's on Monday nights now is because Vice Chair Mazza, back in the day, wanted it changed from Tuesdays to Mondays for the very reason he just stated.
It has never been on Tuesday in the history of Malibu, okay? I requested we keep it on Monday. I requested we keep it on Monday so we could have newspaper coverage.
I just, I just gave you a kudo and you still can't get it right.
You told me I turned down Tuesday. I did, okay? So there is an important factor that the public, our only media channel in Malibu, other than Facebook, I guess, or something, is our newspaper.
Can I make a motion?
And when we get stories about big items that come out two weeks after we do them, it doesn't really work. So, you know, that's a reason for Monday. The, 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 one of the problems is us having enough time. And so I think if we, we push them out there, we have to also put something in there that items are automatically continued if we don't get them by Wednesday of the week prior, automatically continued. And because we tend to get the big projects
John?
With three or four days.
John, we can't do the automatic continuance, but we have somebody that wants to make a motion. So if you hold on, we'd like to hear that.
I do have a question of staff, but if he wants to move and then discuss.
We have other staff to discuss. How are we going to, you know?
So what's our cutoff time right now to start new?
10:30.
So I'd like, so I'd like to make a motion that we start at six and attend.
So you're adding a half an hour?
So it would alter the time a half an hour and we'd be staying on the same day?
Yes, on Mondays.
Okay. And then, did, I would just add a friendly amendment to that, that we get some kind of a, something instituted to get correspondence further in advance? Because I actually think that that would help all of us. I don't think that, unless somebody's opposed to that.
I think that, I think that's very appropriate.
So Vice Chair Mazza, if I may, so Commissioner Hill? So Vice Chair Mazza, if I may, so Commissioner Hill is correct in that the general rule, the only thing, and I'll, you know, myself and, and Ms. Evans will have to look into it. If there was some resolution that was previously been adopted by city council that I'm not aware of, that says all the bodies are going to run consistent with the way we run, so why don't we kind of, I don't want to, table that. Because we, I, I hear you. Do your guys, what you guys are interested in is a cutoff on the correspondence, so you're not getting them up until a half hour or hour before the meeting.
As a friendly amendment, I'd like to suggest what, what, uh, I guess it was, uh, well, somebody suggested that we still get our staff report on time. And, and I, I think we, we would actually speed up the work of the planning commission if, and I don't know if staff can do this, but if staff, maybe we take a month, uh, two weeks off and get staff a week ahead of time. So their, their staff reports are done by that Friday. And if they're not done, continue. Now I notice there's a, there's a notice requirement, but it really, at least me, it really screws me up when I've got all these visits all planned and everything and all of a sudden I don't have the information until Wednesday of the next week or Tuesday of the next week or whatever. And a lot of these are small items. You still have to go out and look at the house, etcetera. And, and we do get a lot. I'd say one out of five, one out of eight.
Okay, John, hold on one second. Rebecca?
I do apologize that you did get an amended agenda with the project later. I take typically two vacations a year, and I was out of the country. And because of our staffing changes, we have somebody new to the process working on the packet. And they were not able to finalize the proofread for RIACon any sooner than they did.
Yeah, no, no shade. Hold on.
Issuing supplementals with major projects has happened, I think, maybe three times this year. I would need to like research to double check that fact, but it's very rare.
I just want you to know that we greatly appreciate you and we love you. I really want you to know that, Rebecca.
I have a question of staff.
I do flee the country now and then.
Question of staff, can you prioritize what's more important to you in terms of, uh, the, the, the idea of coming, holding meetings earlier in the day? How much does that help you? Or, and or how much does it help you if we had, you know, if we had that cutoff on Friday, that no correspondence after Friday so that whether, I, I would still like to see actually the Tuesday meeting if we could cut off the correspondence on Friday. But to have that extra bit of time in there where you can, we can all feel a little more comfortable that we've got what we need and we're not trying to get things out at the last second. What, what, what's most important to you guys?
I think that for many of our planners who, our city staff are required to be here in person if at all possible as opposed to like a contract planner, and they work incredibly long hours. And I think, given the fact that most staff live far outside the city limits, it would be more beneficial to our planners to have them end their day a little bit earlier. And then the, can, the correspondence issue for me is more a matter of, I think the public might also need the weekend to absorb the materials. And they have been warned that we may not be able to fully consider it if they send it one second before the meeting, and some do that strategically. So I think that's your decision as to how much weight you can put on something that you receive immediately prior to the meeting. But I, I hesitate to suggest that we limit.
Well, I guess for me, that, that makes me feel like, I was, I was pretty firm on six thirty. I think I would entertain six because that sounds like it would make some difference. But I'm also, I just really feel like we need to maintain the, the lead times and make sure we really make an effort to get them out the Friday, two weekends before. And that we do have some kind of block that says we, we're not getting things in. Like ideally, the Friday before the meeting would be a good cutoff.
Okay, so.
All right, let me, can I ask a question of staff? Do we get late staff reports because of clerical issues or because they are not finalized and reviewed by that Friday where they're supposed to be distributed? And those are the ones I, I worry about is the ones that they're still writing Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. Not that we don't have enough clerical staff to get them, uh, published. And can we cut that off? Granted, Rebecca does a great job, but if, if some staff report is waiting for some information or something.
Just continue the item. Is that what your comment is?
Yeah, or do something to, to stop that process. You know, make staff reports due a week before they're due. Something like that. Make it a three-week period.
Yeah, I, I think, I think the items we're talking about, and Rebecca mentioned that it's rare that we do publish a packet late. But the few times that we've done that this year, our projects are very time-sensitive. So staff is already working, um, against the clock to get those to the planning commission. They're extremely complicated projects, like the high school. It's a perfect example of that. They're very complicated projects, take a lot of staff time, and yet we are asked to bring those projects to planning commission, city council as, as quickly as we possibly can. And, um, once, they, they go through a, a few levels of review and each time, right? It takes time because they're long reports. So by the time we're complete, uh, you know, we, we have already made commitments. And, uh, you know, we are doing our best to bring those to you. This, this item, uh, I think Rebecca just explained, we, we had, we had unfortunately her on vacation, which we're happy that she took some time off, uh, finally, well deserved. But we had somebody else working on, on the packet as well as it's also complicated, uh, project in terms of entitlement. But this doesn't happen very frequently, so, um, but, but the cutoff on Fridays, I think, is still an issue for, for staff because we're not in the office every Friday. We actually have every other Friday off. And so there's going to be some staff that are going to be off, uh, Friday, uh, when these comments are coming in. And we're not going to have a time to review it until Monday. And again, that's the issue is that reviewing stuff on Monday becomes very complicated.
Is, would there be anything wrong with cutting off the comments on like a Wednesday or a Thursday before the meeting? Because I, I just don't see the, I don't see the, I mean, I understand that it shortens the amount of time that the, that the public has to be able to comment on it and get written comments in.
But if we're really getting the reports out early.
The benefit to that is that we get those comments and we can give them the weight that they need.
Yeah, correct.
Let me, can I comment?
And, and we, we can continue this. I just want to say that we will have to bring that back. So, yeah.
John, go ahead.
Can I make a comment? For example, tonight, uh, five A was prepared on November first. It wasn't, we didn't have time to, to, uh, publish it or anything else. It wasn't prepared until November first. That's what it says right on the cover. So that's our big, one of our big problems is.
That's the outlier, John. That's the outlier.
It's not an outlier. We've had many big projects come in with two thousand pages, uh, on a Tuesday. Believe me.
A lot of, I'm sorry.
That date is not indicative of when the report is actually prepared. It's the city's practice that that is essentially the publishing date. And so that report was prepared earlier. However, as mentioned, Rebecca was on a much desertification. The other staff member doing that was also balancing the need. We had a couple of council items and the council wanted to see some items on their agenda. And I only had one person to do two jobs.
Okay.
So we're going to kind of shelve the, that part of the, the item where we're discussing when we're going to get a cutoff to get public comments, written comments about it because our city attorney needs to talk with Richard and further look into that. He's going to bring that back to us.
I think we need to, we, we have to discuss the whole thing in, in context. Yes, we need that back. And, and if we don't do this right, it's going to screw everybody up. So it doesn't have to be done tonight, but there's some other points I'd like to bring up and one of these, part of what was proposed here is changing the rotation of the meeting. And again, there were, were, it was suggested that. What?
I think that we're going to be sticking with, uh, Mondays. We're going to be going with, hopefully if we have agreement here to start at six o'clock. And that's our plan. I didn't think that we're changing anything else, John.
Well, uh, at least at the city council, and I, I haven't, I gotta read this again, but, um, they were talking about making public comment last, which I think is a horrible idea.
Well, that's, that's, that's not up to us. That's up to them.
Correct. And, and, and so I will just add a bit more not complexity, but there is, we, you really, guys really should try to get a date and time down tonight. The staff is already working, working on notices for next year. So any changes will have to be delayed. And so the idea of.
Okay, so I don't, I don't have any issues with the schedule that's proposed. Does anybody have an issue with that? Essentially, all we're doing is moving the time.
No. My, my, my addendum on that would be to say, what I said before, I don't think we burn out because it's late. We burn out because we're going beyond four hours. So I would say then we would want to adjust our cutoff that's currently at ten thirty. We'd want to slide that up to ten.
No, so the, at least, yeah, the motion that I didn't hear second for, but I'm.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
And so Jerry, the motion was for Monday at six with a cutoff time at, at ten by Commissioner Leonard, and that is the motion that I have not heard a second of.
Okay, I, I seconded that.
Can I comment on that motion and ask a question? Just a question of Mr. Donigan.
John, it's getting painful.
It's not getting painful.
For us, for us.
Well, that's your problem. Uh, the, the, we have decided, we have a schedule. It's the standard Mondays we always have. We've decided six o'clock, okay? That doesn't change, that doesn't alter anything. We can improve that. Okay? Because we've said Monday and we've said six o'clock. But there's other issues that we may add to this, like the cutoff date on, on comments, which we aren't going to today. So we can vote tonight to set the date and the time of the beginning and the end of the meeting. And that's, but that doesn't mean we're done. We're just done with, with picking those days, and we've already picked them. Mondays.
That's, we're, we're in total agreement on that. That's correct.
Right. So the item itself though should be continued when it comes back. It shouldn't end with, these are the days, nothing else.
Okay, but staff is asking us to also look at the days for the calendar because they have other things coming up that they're looking at schedule. So everybody's looked at the dates and we're good with this.
I didn't, my staff report, any dates.
I didn't get any dates either.
They, he had a slide. Can we put up the slide again, please?
I can't plan anything by looking at a slide. I, I, can we just bring back that part of it?
Great. Okay, so if you can bring back an item, I'm going to make an amendment to this, that we bring back an item that brings us the calendar with the dates at our next meeting to here, and we will make it a point to get to that item before we, ten o'clock.
And can I ask you, can I ask Richard if, are those dates? Are those dates the first and third Mondays of every month with the, with the standard Christmas and New Year routine? Is that just like we do every year?
Correct.
Or have you changed anything around?
It's a Christmas and Fourth of July routine.
Fourth of July is one thing. We, here, this is a great, great thing. We're like, we're going to do it on the eighteenth. Next year's, it's on the sixteenth. We can have a meeting on the sixteenth of December.
First in July too.
I know, but that's.
First is on Monday, Friday, the fourth is later, but I know you want to party in the summer.
Yeah.
I know, and some people work harder than others, and some people have jobs, and some people have Christmases out of town, okay? So we have to worry about quorums too, guys.
I, I think the sixteenth of, for twenty twenty-four should be a meeting night, not canceled.
Well, we can decide that when we get our schedule next, next meeting.
I want to ask you a question real quick. Staff, Rebecca, does this Monday at six o'clock do anything for you? Does it help you? Does it keep you the same? Is it the same chaos? And you're used to that same chaos? Or would you like us to do something different?
I'm pretty used to chaos. Um, and I think that frankly, as I mentioned, I think the planners, it would benefit them. I tend to stay a little bit later because I have some technical things to wrap up. But I'd love to see our planners get more rest than they're currently getting. I am curious about.
So six o'clock?
Yes.
On a Monday is okay with you guys?
Yeah, I, I don't usually get to eat anyway.
So I was going to say, so you take, they take a dinner break half an hour earlier.
Dude, Erbs Burgers closes soon. If I don't make it there for dinner, I'm going to be pissed at all of you.
Can I just ask as a point of clarification, we just added the December meeting back to the twenty twenty-three calendar. The schedule right now, if we meet on Mondays for twenty twenty-four, we would be meeting on Tuesday, January second. And I'm wondering if, if, well, what the, what the group's feelings are about that in comparison to the December sixteenth meeting. And perhaps the traditional dark meeting would switch to the first meeting of January rather than the last meeting of December.
Yeah, I think January second, we're dark. The July first, we're dark, but December sixteenth, I think we need a meeting.
That's, oh.
Okay, I, I just want to add a comment to that.
What she said.
The city manager on, on this review has, was calling for closing City Hall that week. Okay, now it's not been decided, but he was going to close City Hall for all employees.
Awesome. They could enjoy a much-needed vacation.
Yeah, nobody's disagreeing with that, but the sixteen isn't when you're going to close the City Hall.
Except we're going to have a meeting and make them come. That's what I'm saying. So I think we should get ourselves straight.
Okay. We got a motion, we got a second, we're going for a roll call.
Does that motion, can, 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 does that motion include continuance of the rest of the item?
Yes.
Okay.
We're bringing back the dates and we're bringing back the, the comment cutoff period, and we're going to bring that back hopefully at our next meeting. If not, then, then one after that.
We'll be ready for the next meeting. Um, Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Pete?
Yes, and I'm making a motion to adjourn.
And I would like to do that for Walt Keller.
Didn't we do that already?
That's the second.
John, I think we already did that.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
I thought that was city council. Okay.
All right, have a good evening.